Calling to order the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of June 13th, 2011, for the municipality of Anchorage. Secretary, please call the roll.
Nancy Pease?
Here.
Jim Frederick?
Here.
Connie Yoshimura?
Here.
Arthur Ischam?
Here.
Bruce Phelps?
Jacey Dean?
Here.
Terry Parks?
Here.
Dana Prue?
Here.
Richard Wilson?
Here.
Thank you. We have no minutes tonight, so we'll go right into the disclosures. Ms. Yoshimura, please.
Mr. Chairman, is it necessary to do disclosures today since this is just a continuation of the hearing that we had on Monday, a week ago?
Yes, it is.
Okay. All right. Ms. Pease, do you have anything to disclose this evening? Mr. Fredericks?
No.
Commissioner Wilson?
No.
Commissioner Parks?
I'm not sure which case it is. It's the one that's up on Juniper. Here, it's case number 2011-061. I have my own property that's adjacent to this particular location.
But you have no financial interest in this property?
No, not at all.
All right. All right. Thank you. Ms. Dean?
I do, and it has to do with case number 2, G2 Legacy. I'm occasionally a general contractor for Legacy, and I've recently worked for them. I don't have anything to do with this project, and I won't.
And so you have no financial interest in this case?
No.
And you feel you can be impartial?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Prue?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Chairman, Ischam?
I have none.
I have several disclosures this evening. I need to disclose that in case 2011-053, I have previously been employed as an independent contractor by Kargotstein Properties in the development of Hillbrook and Eastbrook subdivision in East Anchorage, and I have upon occasion purchased properties from Kargotstein Properties. However, I am not a substantial part of the present action and have no financial interest in this case.
Any other thing, Ms. Yoshimura?
Yes. In regards to the matter of 2011-059, Coconut Housing Authority, I need to inform the commission that I am currently a project manager for Coconut Housing Authority in the construction of Coronado Park, which is a planned unit development in downtown Eagle River. I'm also the listing licensee for the lots that are to be platted in that area.
In regards to 053, you do not have any financial interest in that?
I do not.
Okay. And you feel as though you can render an impartial decision on that?
I do.
Okay. In regards to case 059, again, on that particular case, do you have any financial interest in that?
I do not.
Do you feel as though you can render an impartial decision?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Okay. Well, it looks like we're all good to go on cases tonight, so, okay, we'll move on to... We don't have anything on the consent agenda this evening. The next item we have is item E1, which is the unfinished business, and this was the case 2011-057 for the zoning conditional use for a change to the allowed number of units. And this was continued from last week. At the present time, the public hearing is closed, but is the petitioner's representative here for that ... Okay, good. We may have some questions for you this evening, but again, you won't be allowed to give any testimony, just answer the questions. So, staff, do you have any input for us based on our requests last week?
Mr. Chairman, I was directed to discuss variances and waivers with the applicant and to be prepared to respond to questions regarding variances and waivers for the commission, but the applicant has chosen to not go the variance or waiver route and made an alteration to his site plan, which now meets code. So I'm prepared to answer any questions, but the revised site plan that was emailed to you and laid on the table this evening is code compliant. We would need to make an adjustment to a couple of the conditions of approval, but that's all.
Okay. Does any of the commission have any questions for staff? Yes.
I'd like to make a motion.
All right.
I'd like to move that we postpone this case until the next available Planning and Zoning Commission meeting and reopen the public hearing on the proposed changes.
Okay. There's a second from Ms. Dean. We'd like to speak to your motion there.
We've been given, and I've just seen in the last few minutes, a substantial change to the submitted conditional use, and quite a number of additional comments that have come in since the last meeting, which I have not had a chance to review. I could not in conscience act on this particular issue tonight, and in light of the substantial nature of the change, I believe that the public deserves a chance to comment on it, and such comment would need to be noticed, and I believe the motion to postpone and reopen the public hearing is in order.
Is there any other comments from members of the commission? Okay. Wait. Ms. Pease?
I guess the cover letter to us says that the changes, a total increase of 80 square feet, developed on the lot. And I guess, to me, that wasn't a major change, and I have not had time to read in detail all of the comments, but I hate to delay this. We've been pretty conscious in the past about delaying projects, especially during construction season, so I'm wondering if, since we do have some additional comments, whether we could postpone this until later in the meeting so that some of us could skim the comments during the break?
Well, basically, there's a motion on the table, so we can vote it up or down.
Okay. I guess those are my comments, then. Are we speaking to the motion right now?
Yes.
I just, I'm concerned that we've been sensitive before to the loss of time during the building season, and this seems to be a minor change from what we reviewed before, and there's no parking on the road, which was the big concern, so I'm inclined not to support the suspension until we at least have a chance to look at the materials, or the postponement, rather.
Any other comments from the commissioners? Yes, Ms. Yoshimura?
Well, as you know, I am opposed to proliferation of material being laid on the table, so I think that I am in favor of the postponement, but I'm not sure that we need to reopen a public hearing. I am sensitive to what Ms. Pease has to say about this is a construction season, and I know how important that is, and it seems like they've worked out these issues with staff, but what exactly have they done, since I haven't had time to read this material since it was just laid on the table?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Yoshimura, if you would take a look at the 11-by-17 site plan, the two southernmost units. The garages have been extended slightly, and there is a small zigzag in them that allows a second car to pull in all the way through at a slight angle for the parking. So each of the units now provides the required number of parking spaces for it, plus overflow, and all spaces are on the property, as was just pointed out. There's no longer any parking on Taos Road.
Can you tell me how you calculate that garage area? It doesn't matter if it's on an angle as far as how the municipality considers interior parking spaces?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Yoshimura, no. It's just angled parking. As long as the spaces are long enough and wide enough, they're legal, and traffic has reviewed it and signed off on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further comments or questions from the commission? Is there objection?
Yes.
Okay. We'll have to use our machines, and basically, a yes vote postpones this to a date that we haven't yet selected, and reopens the public hearing, and a no vote requires us to deal with the situation tonight. Okay. The matter still rests with the commission. I'll take a positive motion for approval to get the thing on the table. Moved by Ms. Pease. Is there a second? By Ms. Dean. Okay. Ms. Pease, would you please state your motion and speak to it?
Actually, I would like to move that we go into a committee of the whole for five minutes to allow people to look at the materials placed before us. This is unusual, but it would resolve the concern people had of having additional materials laid before us. Would that be acceptable?
Ms. Dean, do you second going into committee of the whole?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any objection?
I object.
Okay. Object? Okay. We'll have to use our machines, then. A yes moves us into committee of the whole, a no prevents us from going into the committee of the whole. That passes. We're in the committee of the whole. Ms. Pease, go ahead, and you start out the discussion.
Yes. My purpose in going into the committee of the whole was just to allow those who might not have seen the additional letters to skim through the letters. They actually could be read in five minutes. There are not that many of them. My sense in looking at them earlier was that most, a couple of them did pertain to this new configuration of the slightly angled parking in the garage, and a couple of them were on the subject of density, which we have already heard. So my intent was to give proper consideration to the materials that were put before us since the public hearing, as I understand it, has been closed. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct. The public hearing has been closed, but people did take the time to make written comments to us, so I was just going to try to do the public, give the public the benefit of reading their work. So I was just going to ask for about three to five minutes to take a look, further look at these for anyone who wants to...
Okay. Let's go ahead and read these things, and...
May I make a comment, please?
Yes.
I strongly object to taking the public's time in session to review materials that we should have had and plenty of time to do so. This is highly objectionable to me.
The objection is noted. Members of the commission finished reading yet?
Yes.
Okay. Are we ready to ... Do we want to have any further discussion in this format that we're in, Ms. Pease?
Yes, I did have one question for staff, and that is the question raised by one of the commenters in our packet, Kim Blamel, regarding dedicated overflow parking spaces. I don't think that's something that we heard about in the public hearing before. And actually, I don't know if I'm allowed to raise that question. It doesn't pertain to the changed footprint of the building, so is that permissible to raise that question?
Say again what you hear.
Someone raised the question in a letter regarding dedicated overflow parking spaces, and supposing that the owners of unit 1 and 2 would, their parking spaces are the overflow parking spaces, and they would have to agree to share their private parking spaces in their garage. It seemed a little confused, and I just wanted to clarify it, but I needed a direction from the chair as to whether we should only be addressing questions related to this new building footprint and the new parking within that angled area.
The new building footprint is what will eventually be on the floor, I would assume, so that's what we have to do.
All right. Then, in that case, I didn't find, I didn't have any questions based on what was written and sent in to us. Many of the questions were on the density of the project or on the tandem parking issue in general, but not on this new, longer building footprint and the slight angle of the tandem parking. So I don't see that these comments are, these comments probably should have been raised before. They're not really pertinent to the specific change the applicant has presented to us.
Okay. Mr. Frederick? You were on, okay. Ms. Yoshimura?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay. We've got to come out of the committee of the whole first. So you moved to come out of the committee of the whole. It's been seconded by Ms. Dean. Is there any objection? Okay. We're now out of the committee of the whole, and I'm looking for a positive motion. Ms. Yoshimura, moving, and Ms. Dean is seconded. Please state your motion, and you may speak to it then.
In the matter of case 2011-057, I move for approval. I think the petitioner has done a good job working with staff in resolving the issues related, that we heard previously during the public hearing, as it relates to off-site parking. I think the solution is creative, if not a little bit unorthodox, but I am pleased to see the flexibility from the traffic department in allowing the angled interior parking and also counting the additional parking spaces in front of the owner's unit. I find, in general, the municipality of Anchorage's parking requirements for condominium developments are onerous and excessive, and so I'm happy to see this flexibility. So I move that the commission accept the department recommendations 1 through 9 with the exclusion of number 10. I think everyone's worked really hard to resolve this parking issue. Thank you.
Is there any other comments? Ms. Pease?
Yes. I just wanted to add, we did take a little bit of an unorthodox approach in order to be able to review and to make a final vote on this issue, and I know that didn't sit well with some members of the commission, so I hope we'll talk about that a little bit in the future. But what we attempted to do was to move this project expeditiously, as we try to do with most projects before us, recognizing that time is of the essence in our short construction season. I think we did do justice to the public comments. We had the public hearing at some length last week, and then we took the time to look at the changes carefully, and although many of the written comments submitted to us were not particularly on the issue of the building footprint, the increase of 80 square feet, or the slight angle of the parking, we did take the time to look at those comments, even though the public comment period was closed. And the 80-square-foot addition to the building footprint is minor compared to the building footprint in totality, and in general, the density of this project is slightly larger, about 25 percent larger than the density on an adjoining lot of condominiums, but the effect of the density is mitigated by the staggered facades of the buildings and the architectural design features that give interest to the building and make it quite a handsome project. So I'll be supporting this and appreciate staff and the applicant's creativity in resolving the parking on-site, which seemed to be the biggest concern of the, one of the big concerns of the public.
Is there any other comment? Mr. Frederick?
I'm going to reiterate that I think we're rushing to judgment on this, and while this may or may not be the right solution to this, and may or not, may or may not be an acceptable conditional use, I haven't had time to review the material, and I think that taking public time in the middle of a regularly scheduled session to do so is unacceptable to me, and I'll be abstaining from this vote.
Any other further comments? Okay. Before we vote, I just want to make sure, Ms. Yoshimura, you said we would not be including condition 10?
That is correct.
Okay.
We have to do with the off-site.
Right, with the parking. Right. Okay. Is there any other comments from members of the commission? Ms. Ferguson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Point of clarification from Mr. Frederick. We don't believe an abstention is in order. He needs to either vote yes or no.
Thank you.
He cannot abstain. He must vote.
I will.
Is there objection? There's no objection. Okay. All right. Very. Let's use our machines, then. A yes vote approves this, with the exception of department recommendation number 10. No vote does not approve. That passes. All right. We'll now move on to our public hearings. In case everybody, and I hope everybody saved their stuff from last week, last week's G6 case is now G1, and that's case 2011-053, Kargotstein's Properties. We'll hear from the staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a limited site plan review for facade improvements to the Sears Mall in accordance with AMC 2135020, 215320, and 2155130A. This mall was actually constructed in 1966, and it contains 177,162 square feet. The facade improvements are proposed to the north base of the building. The facade improvements will not create any additional leasable floor area additions. They are intended to be installed in this construction season, and there will be no change in the ownership of the Sears Mall. It's owned by, the building is owned by Kargotstein. The objective of these improvements is to create a more attractive facade along the north side of the mall while also providing better pedestrian scale, orientation, and appeal. It will consist of a remodeled central mall area with expanded merchandise display space and sidewalk area, wall signage panels referred to as chiclets, additional entry improvements at the east and west ends of the mall, and a metal screen along the canopy fascia which extends over a portion of the sidewalk. The proposed wall signage panels are subject to the sign ordinance, and they will be reviewed during the building permit phase of the project. The traffic and pedestrian circulation is well established with vehicular access from all the four abutting rights of way, all adjoining streets, minor and major arterials and expressway, which meet the requirement to access from a collector's street or greater. The entire project involves the installation of facade, entry roof, and exterior panels for display purposes and also landscaping. That was true at the time of this writing. The entire budget is $300,000 and is being spent on aesthetic improvements to the exterior existing structure, which satisfies just about all, or addresses all of the, many of the conditions in the large retail establishment. They are all intended to increase pedestrian amenities and also to improve the aesthetics of the building. of the building. So, the entire, the entire budget is proposed to be spent on these exterior aesthetic improvements to the building. The proposed project meets Anchorage policies of Anchorage 2020, specifically policy number seven and number 21. Since the writing of this case, the petitioner has talked with the landscape architect, because this is a north, north-basing side of the, of the building. It will be difficult to determine which plants might survive. At this, at the last time I spoke with the petitioner's representative, they were just trying to decide exactly what landscaping, if any, that could be installed. There was not a landscaping plan submitted with this project. They are also thinking of terms of more creative lighting for the night, the long nights during wintertime, but for specifics of that detail, I would defer to the petitioner, because at this point, I don't know what they've actually decided. But the department does recommend approval of the limited site plan review, subject to the three, four conditions on pages eight and nine of the packet. Thank you.
Thank you. Through the chair, Ms. O'Brien, a couple of questions. I noticed in the, in the findings, number 17 says that if the Planning and Zoning Commission does not act on an application under this section within 90 days after submission of a complete application, the application shall be deemed approved. I don't recall in my three and a half years on the commission that I've run across this particular statement. Can you tell me the citation for that? If you wanted to come back to that, that's fine. It's really just a kind of point of information with me. It doesn't affect how I'm looking at the case, but...
Mr. Chair, that, I pulled that from another packet that was presented to the board as a minor amendment to a large retail establishment. It does sound more similar to the plating requirement than it does to conditional uses, but I'll try to find that.
Okay, so, let me ask you the question, and you can get back to us on that one. You mentioned the possibility of some landscaping and lighting changes, but just to be clear, there are no additional landscaping or lighting requirements as a, as a result of this application, are there?
Through the chair, Mr. Frederick, no, there are not, but that was part of the, initially, that was part of the proposed improvements until the advice came from the landscape architect that plantings may not survive, and so they're trying to, the petitioner is trying to determine some other means by which to improve the interest of the, the north base of the building, and one of the things that they were determining was maybe special light, they were discussing, not determining, was special lighting that would add interest through the long, dark nights in wintertime. But again, that's as far as I know for anything to replace plantings if they're not viable, and I do defer to the applicant, because that's as far as my information goes on.
Okay, so, I, you know, I applaud their thinking in trying to prove the appearance of the exterior of the building, but I just want to make sure that we weren't under a false impression that it was required that they do that. Thank you.
Mr. Wilson?
I do think that the improvement that's proposed here is a good thing. It's a long blank wall, and this would add interest.
Mr. Wilson, let's hold this for, for our determination, yeah, we haven't, we haven't heard any public testimony or anything yet, so let's, let's get ahead of ourselves.
My question, point, just point of information to staff is, numbering is a little off. You have two, you have two 13s and no 16 on the list there. Pages.
Okay, Ms. O'Brien?
In, in section 215320, under item letter number Q, the Planning and Zoning Commission shall schedule a meeting to act on an application within 90 days after receipt of a complete But it does not state that it would be automatically approved if it is not acted upon within 90 days.
Mr. Chair?
So, we need...
Oh, I, just a comment, I'm, you know, I'm kind of all in favor of those kind of deadlines, and perhaps if it doesn't say so, it should.
Okay, Ms. Pease?
Yes, through the chair, Ms. O'Brien, I trust you got my question regarding the chiclets. From the packet, it looks as if they are not quite display windows, but they do show product information, and I wondered whether these fall under the sign ordinance, and if so, did you review them to see if the sign ordinance standards, in terms of total square footage and illumination and that sort of thing, would be met if, if these are in fact advertising surfaces?
Through the chair, I did discuss with the petitioner's representative, who is currently out of town, but I did discuss with him the purpose of the chiclets, and I said, is this to display goods or services for, that are offered within the mall, by various stores? And they said yes. I don't, but they, I, they do fall under the sign ordinance, and will, the square footage will be reviewed during the building permit process. I did not review them for conformance with the sign ordinance.
Then, just through the chair, is this a concept approval, or, I guess I want to make sure that we're not raising expectations if there are limitations on how many of these and that sort of thing.
Mr. Chair, I believe this, the request is for a final approval.
But that's something we could condition.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Frederick, your name popped up again, or you've, just, okay. Ms. O'Brien?
Mr. Chair, the condition number four says signage shall meet the sign code per AMC 2147. Is that sufficient condition?
That's a start. We'll take note of it. Ms. Yoshimura?
I was just going to tell Ms. Pease, if I could, that Office Depot Downtown has similar display cases. I'm not privy to the exact size of those versus the ones on this property, but they're sometimes used, I think, to promote things other than product, if there was an event going on or something like that. So, there are items that can be taken down and put back up and all sorts of things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any more questions, staff? Okay, I have one question. Ms. O'Brien, your recommendation number two, do we actually, do they have to file with the State of Alaska Recorder's Office, this approval of the site plan review? I mean, doesn't, it's not a zoning action in the true sense of it.
Mr. Chair, the resolution that would be written for the board's decision would be recorded at the District Recorder's Office.
Okay, okay, okay. Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on here to the petitioner's representative. Before we have the petitioner's representative come forward, is the petitioner's representative here? Well, I'll go ahead and read the, read the instructions, and then we'll see if there's anybody that either wants to speak for the petitioner, and then we'll see if there's anybody that wishes to testify. So, after staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established by the commission, and these are, petitioner has 10 minutes. Representatives of groups such as community councils, PTAs have five minutes. Individuals have three minutes. When testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after the Planning and Zoning Commission's final decision. Any individual may request written findings from any commission decision within seven days. All right, is the petitioner's representative here this evening? Okay, obviously, the petitioner doesn't have anything to say on this. Is there anybody that wishes to make public testimony? This is case number 2011-053, Cargotstein Properties, Limited Site Plan Review for Improvements to the North Facade of the Sears Mall. Is there anybody that wishes to testify? Is there anybody that wishes to testify? The public hearing is closed, and matter rests with the commission. Ms. Pease has made a motion to approve, been seconded by Mr. Parks, and Ms. Pease, would you speak to your motion, please, and make your motion and speak to it, please?
In the matter of case 2001-053, I move for approval of the limited site plan review for the north facade of the Sears Mall, with the department recommendations suggested on pages eight and nine of our packet, and I do have two changes.
Let's see, how do we want to deal with this thing? Okay, you as the maker of the motion can add the changes, it's just that we can't have friendly amendments to your initial...
Right. And those changes are to insert into condition one, the wording, resolve with planning staff that any planters will have plant materials suited to the low-light conditions and relatively confined planting area proposed. If planters are not practical, resolve with staff other design elements, or substitute And my other change is to add to condition four, after the word signage, comma, including the display areas called chiclets, comma, and then continue the sentence, which reads, shall meet the sign code per AMC 2147.
And, Mr. Parks, are you okay with that?
I'm okay. I'm not sure we use the right terminology with chiclets, because that, I think that's the piece that runs across the facade at the top, not the windows. Is that what you're...
We can quickly clarify that. I am referring to the display areas that are kind of insets, and I thought that the application was calling those chiclets.
Maybe it's my misunderstanding, but...
Wall signage, our, page three of our packet says, wall signage panels, and in parentheses, referred to as chiclets. We can say, in the motion for clarity, signage, including the wall signage areas called chiclets.
I'll buy into that.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Any, any further comments from staff? Ms. Yoshimura?
Well, what does the sign code say regarding these windows? You could refresh my memory.
I've been advised that they fall into the overall signage code and that they are allowed, and they would have to go through review during the building permit, to make sure that they, they conform to the signage code.
Are these the first ones since the sign code was adopted, the recently adopted sign code?
Through the chair, for wall panels?
Mm-hmm. For example, I don't remember, I don't believe Walmart has them, or plans on having them, so I'm just wondering if these are the first ones since the adoption of the revised sign code?
My understanding, and I don't have a long history with the commission, is that this is the first one that would fall under the sign code for those wall panels?
So, does the sign code address these wall panels?
Specifically, through the chair, Ms. Yosh, Yosh, Yoshim, I can't say your name tonight.
Yoshimura.
Yes. They, there's nothing that specifically talks about wall panels or advertising within them. They would simply get an idea from the petitioner, how often they intend to put it up. Is it a temporary sign, and that therefore, they'd have to seek a, a temporary sign permit, which would allow them to keep any sort of advertising up for that period of time. But other than that, if it was signage that they intended to keep up permanently, then they would just check to see if it fell within the overall signage that they're allowed, giving their, it's a simple mathematical thing. You add up the wall space that they have, and then you can put up a sign for certain percentage of that amount for advertising, and if they fall within that range, then they're allowed. If they wanted to be a permanent sign within those chiclets, if it's temporary, as I said, they would have to seek a temporary sign permit.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, or staff, or comments from the commission? Okay, is there any objection?
Should we have findings?
Yes, go ahead.
This is a largely aesthetic upgrade to one of our older mall, large retail sites, and in general, I think it adds to the appearance of the building and to the sort of community friendliness of it, to have the entryways a little better defined. The chiclets, the wall signage panels, do appear to be kind of a new feature that this commission at least hasn't reviewed in any of our recent memories, and therefore, we have noted that the wall signage panels are signage and do need to be reviewed by the building, in the building permit review, to make sure that the dimensions, the illumination, and that sort of, those sorts of criteria are met. It's the intent to make this an aesthetically pleasing facade and, but within the, and not, you know, a busy, a busy facade. And there is no change to the... And there is no change to the footprint of the building, no change to the services or commercial activities in the building, so therefore, no change to the traffic and noise and other environmental considerations. And therefore, it appears to meet the criteria for changes to a large retail establishment in accordance with AMC 2135020, 215320, and 2155130A. I will just add one more. Finding the staff in looking at compatibility with the comp plan raised the compatibility with policy 48, which addresses the need for site development plans to be designed to enhance or preserve scenic views and other significant natural features, and that's rather irrelevant. This isn't about scenic views or natural features, but it is an improvement to the built landscape.
Is there any objection? That passes.
Can I request a brief recess?
I'm sorry?
Brief recess?
Take a five-minute. Could somebody take our seats and get started again? Calling a meeting back to order of the Planning and Zoning Commission of June 13, 2011. We'll now move on to case number 2011-058, Legacy LLC amending a conditional use for an administrative building. Could hear the staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Legacy LLC, represented by Dell HKM, is making two requests. First is an amendment to their existing final conditional use for a nursing home, and then their second request is concept approval of conditional use of a nursing home for the entire site. So, there's two requests at issue. The existing final conditional use permit was approved by the commission on March 7 of this year with resolution 2011-010. You can, sorry, the resolution was included in the packet. I don't have a page here. Page 116 and 118 is the resolution of approval for the final conditional use, which is being amended with one of the requests here tonight. The proposed changes remain within the approved area and move the parking lot closer to the cottages, relocate the Commons Building, and provide additional landscaping where budding the B3 district to the south. These amendments proposed in this request are not an expansion. Legacy LLC is also requesting concept approval for a conditional use for a nursing home. This is essentially a concept approval of the master plan for the entire site. Legacy LLC has provided four different concept plans of the site, and this is in response to the commission's stated desire on March 7, on the March 7 public hearing, to see a full build-out of the site, see what it would look like when the site expands into future areas within this tract of land. Anchorage Municipal Code 2115-030E, concept approval of conditional uses, there's just a small paragraph on that, but I'll just read the last sentence. "Concept approval does not approve a precise plan, site plan, or intensity, or use, and does not permit any structure or any use of land or a structure." So essentially, prior to obtaining a building permit for construction of development, based on any of the four concept plans, the petitioner would need to return to the commission and obtain a final conditional use permit approval through the public hearing process. So, concept approval is not a way of short cutting any sort of approval. There is one public comment in opposition to the request for amendment to conditional use permit. It is attached. The person commenting is the adjacent landowner. He objects to the approval of the conditional use because it may affect how he would develop his property. The drainage and water pressure concerns that he raises were dealt with by the plating board at its last meeting on Wednesday of two weeks ago with preliminary plat case S-11875-1 Waldeck subdivision. The plating board approved the proposed plat with a condition stating, quote, "Submit a grading and drainage plan and resolve the need for drainage easements," end quote. The plating board considered whether the site needed drainage easements and decided to allow private development of the municipality to handle this through their normal process. The other objection that the person from the public, the adjacent landowner, raised was water pressure, and the person complaining, they stated that they dropped their concern because AWU, Anchorage Water and Wastewater Utility Modeling, determined that there was ample water pressure even at full build-out, so that's definitely not an issue. The general conditional use standards for the final conditional use, this amendment, are met for the general conditional use standards. The supplementary district standards for hospitals and nursing homes, the standard is also met for this final conditional use, the amendment. The standard also appears to be met for the requested concept approval of the four alternative plans of the entire site, but standards will not be reviewed until the final conditional use is submitted sometime in the future. Now, the conditional use standards for healthcare facilities, the planning division believes that the standard is met for this amendment to the final conditional use, and also believes that it is met for the concept approval for the whole site. The department therefore recommends approval of the amendment to the final conditional use with the conditions A1 through 16, that's on pages nine, 10, and 11 of your packet. Furthermore, the department recommends granting concept approval of the conditional use for the entire site, and that is point B on page 11. Be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Pease.
Yes, through the chair, and this may be something that the petitioner would answer. I don't see crosswalks. I'm looking at the site plans or conceptual master plans on pages 13 and 14 and so on of our packet. And can you address, please, the pedestrian crossing where the parking lot driveway tees into the main driveway?
Through the chair, Ms. Pease, I'd ask that you please direct the petitioner to respond to that question. I thought I was sure about my answer, but better than me ramble, just to have them answer that question.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for staff? Okay, I have one question. In regards to the approvals, the A and the B, I assume you want us to deal those separate items?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Is there any particular sequence? You want us to do A first and followed by B?
I have no preference.
Okay. One isn't dependent on the other, is what you're saying? I guess really...
I have to think about it, but...
We better do B second because we...
Yeah, so they have an existing conditional use, final conditional use approval. They're seeking to amend their site plan, amend their final approval, and then ask for a concept approval for the full site. I'd have to think about any other question.
Yeah, well, we'll do A first, anyway. Okay, well, let's go ahead and move out then on the petitioner's information. Again, let me read the rules. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedure. Petitioners have 10 minutes. Representatives of groups have five minutes. Individuals have three minutes. When testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after the Planning and Zoning Commission's final decision. Finally, any individual may request written findings from any commission decision within seven days. Please state your name for the record, and how much time you wish to reserve rebuttal.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Michelle Ritter. I'm a land use planner with Dell HKM. I'd like to reserve five minutes for my rebuttal. With me this evening is Tanya Hickock, civil engineer and land use planner with Dell HKM, and Ivan Clark, the project engineer with Dell HKM, John Pales, and Jerry Hendrickson from Legacy and Providence to answer any questions that you may have regarding something they can help you with. The conditional use permit for the Providence-Alaska cottages was approved earlier this year on March 7 by the Planning and Zoning Commission. At that public hearing, recommendations by the commission were made regarding reducing the distance from the parking to the cottages and providing a master plan for the entire site. After the hearing, the design team revisited the site plan and found that by bringing in the Commons Building to the east, the distance between the parking and the cottages could be reduced by at least half. This new layout also provides greater synergy between the cottages and the Commons Building and potential future development. So, at that time, the design team also looked at what the likely future development of the property would be, and laid out several conceptual site plans that are likely to be developed. As a result of these changes, this evening, we are here seeking two approvals, as Frances mentioned. First, we are requesting approval of a major amendment to the existing conditional use permit to allow for the relocation of the Commons Building. This relocation will allow for the reduced distance between parking and the cottages, as well as will provide greater design flexibility for future development. Secondly, we are requesting conceptual approval for a conditional use permit for the remainder of the site. This is basically the approval of a conceptual master plan layout, which identifies the future areas that will be developed, and we have provided four layouts that are potential to the development. Typically, conceptual approval is only good for 18 months, but the future development of this site is dependent upon funding and state approval, so we are requesting that the approval for the conceptual master plan or conditional use permit is extended for five years. As Mr. McLaughlin also mentioned, the replat of the site was improved earlier this month by the plating board. The replat was essentially housekeeping in nature, as it did not create any new property boundaries, but rather vacated unnecessary easements that encumbered the site. We have read through the case packet and staff's recommendations and agree with what has been prepared. I'd like to thank Mr. McLaughlin for his time and assistance, and I'm happy to answer any questions to specific details that you may have. I'd like to say that I'm in need of my time for rebuttal.
Okay, you've got five, six, seven minutes and 29 seconds for rebuttal. Okay, are there any questions for the petitioner? Ms. Pease?
Through the chair, in looking at the site plans on pages 14 through 17, there's a sidewalk along the main driveway that comes in from Boniface Parkway, one of the main driveways, I guess. There doesn't seem to be any crosswalk for that sidewalk where the parking lot entry is. Can you, was that, why would that be a good design?
Actually, if you look at, through the chair, if you look at page 103, there's an additional site and grading plan, which I think better reflects the crosswalks. And you'll see that actually at three locations from the cottages to that parking area, there are three crosswalks. The most southern one and the most northern, the closest to the cul-de-sac, will both be heated crossings, and the one to the north, or kind of the midway, will be a painted sidewalk.
Yes, through the chair, I do see those, but the one that I don't see is if we're looking at page 103, it's closest to Boniface Parkway. People are walking into this site from Boniface Parkway, there's a sidewalk that comes in, and then there's that main driveway out of the parking lot, and there's no crosswalk there. And I was thinking that might be a necessary place for a crosswalk.
I believe that it was put a little bit further from that to avoid conflict with traffic, so to have it instead of where people are turning out of.
I don't think we're maybe making sense. Could you maybe point to the drawing there? Okay, if you start at Boniface Parkway, and you move your finger along that little white line, which is a sidewalk, okay, you come right to there, and there's a driveway into the parking lot, and there's no crosswalk there.
We can add that.
Okay, great. And then, my other question on sidewalks was, I did have some discussion questions back and forth with Mr. McLaughlin on the width of the sidewalk, and four feet is, I understand, the design width?
It's actually five feet.
Okay. And pardon me for not knowing this, but with a wheelchair then, does that allow someone to be alongside it in case need of assistance? I'm just thinking in terms of snow. If all you have is five feet, is that...
ADA minimums are actually 36 inches, so we believe that five feet should be adequate for wheelchair and assistance.
Okay, thanks. And then one more question? This may be to staff, I'm not sure. With regard to the residential density on this parcel, it's R3, 26 acres, and it looked to me as if there would be 14 cottages at full build-out, at least the more, some of the scenarios have 14 cottages. How do you calculate the residential density and whether it meets the R3 criteria? Because that would be residences, that would be individual residents, as opposed to, you know, R3 is dwelling units per acre. So, did you find that this density meets the land use plan intent for residential density in this area?
This question was raised in early pre-application meetings, and the full build-out easily met the residential density. I can't recall the numbers right now, but if you can return to me a little bit, what I'll do is take the R3 district regulations and just divide out dwelling units per acre, the maximum achievable, and then, I guess, count cottages and try and do the math here.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Prues.
Thank you. First, do we have the original approved site plan?
Yes, it's up here.
Do we have anything in our packet? I couldn't find it.
I believe it's in the back of your packet.
Page 119.
The old site plan is on page 119.
And we have a larger copy of that site plan up here next to the new proposed site plan.
So, my first question to the chair is, the first thing I noticed is a reduction of parking spaces along the access road back to the cul-de-sac. And I do not, I see one sidewalk across to unit five, close to unit five. I don't see anything for units two, three, four. Unit seven is at the end. I see added parking at the end of the cul-de-sac, and I'm just wondering, for parking, that units three, two, three, four, and two, three even four, have about three parking spots per unit that you don't have to, apparently, I'm trying to, the pedestrian walkway, if you park in the parking lot for the future, for the building, the main building, you would have to walk all the way to it, back towards Boniface, cross on the sidewalk to get to, say, unit four, back by unit one, two, three, and back to four. Is that correct? How would they park in that big parking? How would, how would they park in that big parking lot and get to unit four?
Give me one moment.
Maybe walk down towards unit five, or let's say, unit three.
From unit four.
Let's take three, take three.
Three. You could either walk down to Boniface, or you could walk to the south, to the other pedestrian cross, crossing.
Does that, does that seem a little far for you? Is that kind of like the back of a, half a block to cross the road than to come back along?
I think that may have been designed for a safety issue because of the curve of the road, and that it, it would not easily be able to see someone crossing at the curve, so they wanted to get them out into a more straightaway area.
Well, I suppose, but, but if you put that many buildings in that tight a curve, you're exacerbating the problem with that.
So we.
Again, I noticed that you eliminated all the parking on the one side of the road, expanded the main parking lot, but didn't put really any access to those units that I would call reasonable. And I assume, is that still snow storage?
The area between the parking and the cul-de-sac?
Yes.
Yes. And the parking along the cul-de-sac was removed because the need was no longer there as the, the.
The what would, I'm sorry?
The need, originally, there was going to be cottages on the other side of the cul-de-sac, and that's why there had been the other row of parking. And so with the elimination of those cottages, so there'd be more room for vehicles, they removed that.
And how many, how many cott, how many units reach each cottage, again?
There's 12, and there's 98 parking spaces required, and the site currently has 161.
Well, my observation is that those, those 161 parking lot spaces, about 140 of them aren't relevant.
When people enter the site, they're going to be checking in at the Commons Building, so I think that's why they have a lot of the parking towards the, closest to the Commons, and then be walking across to the cottages. And the, we've done the distance on all the cottage, and the greatest distance is 250 feet. And that's from, if you were parking at the front door of the Commons and walking to Cottage Three. So effectively, I mean, the distance has been greatly reduced.
From the front door?
Of the Commons, yes.
Well, I, I still, I, I still see that the, walking all the way back towards Boniface, if you park, um, and for those people that don't check in at the front service or, or when I do, are you telling me that all, everybody wants to visit in one of those units has to check into the front?
Yeah.
Or they, can they go to the front of each building?
No, they are, their policy is they should be checking in with the, at the Commons Building.
So what, what that means tells me then is you have a lot of pedestrian traffic, because everybody's going to be walking quite a ways.
And we believe that we've provided good pathways to the cottages. One, I'm looking at this, and I wonder if maybe the, the pathway that we're showing from Cottage Five and Six, if it couldn't be moved more to the north to kind of help with some of that distance? To get it closer to Cottage Four?
Well, that, that, or add another one, but then to go from the front door to check in and go all the way to Cottage Eight, uh, Seven, um, that's 250 feet, to cross, cross the street in front, but walk all the way around through one through six to seven, or, I'm sorry, come back around, would they walk across?
That, that may be closer to about 300 feet.
Yeah. Well, when you, when you indicated that everybody's got to go through the front now, that just added a little more dimension than, than us anticipating with people and traffic. So I'll take a look at that for a minute.
Okay.
Ms. Yashimura?
Well, I guess I'm trying to find a comparison for parking lots, and I think of the Fred Meyer parking lot on Northern Lights, between Northern Lights and Benson Boulevard, and I can't remember how many parking spaces there were, but when the gas station came in, they had to come in for approval to this commission. And initially, I thought that all the little walkways that we required in the Fred Meyer parking lot were superfluous and unnecessary, and no one would ever use them. But that's the store that I frequent, and I notice people are following the sidewalks. And it's really a lot less congested and a lot more pleasant. So, I'm wondering if there couldn't possibly be a sidewalk or two added in this parking lot, so that it would be a little easier to navigate even to the front door of the Commons Building. If you have excess parking, I think that might be an advantage, taking into consideration that I was opposed to those sorts of things, but I think it really does help with traffic and congestion.
Any, any further questions for the petitioner? Okay, I just have one question. I'm wondering, you know, Cottage Three, maybe another walkway there to handle the people that would park sort of in that parking lot. So that would give you two, uh, two sidewalks across that snow storage area, which would have to be kept clean in the winter, but nevertheless, they'd be used, you know, six or seven months out of the year. And then some way for people to get down here to eight and seven and six, because they'll have to come down to that parking lot, and then they should have some sort of a marked way to get across there to get onto that sidewalk that leads them over there, because you do have a, a sidewalk, it's right out of six, but you don't have any way to get down to the, out of the parking lot into the sidewalk. That's just something to consider.
Do you mean the, the parking lot from cottages seven and eight?
Well, no, from the large parking lot on the side of the Commons Building there. I mean, I suspect what happened, people drive up to that Commons Building, they'll go in, get permission to go visit whoever they want to visit, then they're going to drive their car as close as they possibly can get on that parking lot area, and then they're going to walk the rest of the way. They're not going to park way over by Boniface and then walk all the way unless they're, you know, marathon runners or something like that. They're going to try and get as close as they can with a vehicle, so I would suggest you take that into consideration. So, anyway, any other questions for the petitioner? Okay, like I said, you've got seven and something minutes for rebuttal.
Okay.
So let's go ahead and hear from anybody that wishes to testify in the public hearing.
Thank you.
Is there anybody that wishes to testify? Sir, please state your name for the record, and who do you represent?
My name is Judd Walker, and I represent Waldeck Enterprises. I'm actually the person that sold the property to Legacy.
Okay, well, you've still got three minutes.
Thank you. I think that the project's a great project. I'm not here to complain about that, Mr. Chair, members. The problems that I've been having are no communication with the actual contractors and engineers, and that's where my problem lies. I was not contacted at all prior to them doing any of the construction or any of the work that's being done there now. I finally contacted, I believe it was Luke Blumfield, and we talked, and we went back and forth, and we were working on a water issue I had, which, by the way, has been resolved. But the storm drain wasn't, and, you know, where Boniface, the storm drain on Boniface is, in the lowest part of that commercial piece that I have, that business tract there, there's about a six-foot elevation change going uphill that I have to run uphill to get to Boniface. And so it requires about an 11 or 12-foot fill there, which is really kind of ridiculous in my mind that I have to put 11 or 12-foot fill there when there was a storm drain that was supplied to Legacy on the very northeast corner of their property, which we had installed, our park uses it, and there's, it's been there for a while. Now they're basically cutting me off with no storm drain and telling me I have to go back to Boniface, which is a rather expensive ordeal. I mean, we have to, now we're talking, we have lift stations or 11-foot of fill, you know, somewhere around $10 a ton or more. So, I'm just here to ask that the planning, I have no problem with the conditional use amendment at all. What I do have a problem with is that to make sure that I have some type of, uh, way to get rid of my water, other than having to lift it up to Boniface for the storm drain. So, basically, that's why I'm here, no other reason, no objections to the actual project, just that, you know, as a developer, I have always contacted my property owners next to me to find out what I'm dealing with, who I have to deal with, and this was never done by Providence or Legacy, and that's, that's where I have the issue, and I want to see that the storm drain issue gets resolved.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Walker? Mr. Prues.
Where, where's your property located now?
Uh, I'm right there, actually, on the corner, northeast corner of the, of Boniface. I'm in the property, there's six and a half acres there that surrounds Holiday that's all commercial. It's kind of in that little, in the southwest bite of their L there.
Okay. And, and your drainage issue is that with this development, the water comes your direction, or does your water?
Well, I don't have any way to get rid of water is the problem. It runs uphill to Boniface from the lowest part of my site there. And I had actually offered to pay for the additional size and piping, whatever, apparently that wasn't an option, but basically what it leaves is it leaves me a 10-foot fill to actually get my property, actually, it comes out to about 11 or 12-foot fill to get my property to drain back to Boniface, which is what they're now basically forcing me to do.
So, the property that you have is, there's no improvements on it right now?
No.
And by putting 10 or 11-foot of fill, would that, what would that do to the property in relationship to its elevation to Boniface?
Well, as I, as I remember from the plan, it comes in at about 202 foot there at the far northeast corner, that joint access. So, the, as I remember, the storm drain basin is at 201, so we're actually already a foot deeper out here, you know, on my property, where it's got to go up a foot still to get to Boniface. Basically, what's happening is I have nowhere to get rid of my water. It's just all going to go to the northeast corner there, and unless I can take it out northeast, or I build the property up 11 to 12 foot, that's my only other option, is build it up 11 or 12 foot and take it back down to Boniface. And this property was always naturally draining to the northeast, did it always drain northeast? They had, they're hooking into a city storm drain on the northeast corner, but yet they're cutting me off, they're just using that for them because it's going to be private, and then I have nothing to tie into, except for now, I have to go back to Boniface and raise my, you either have a storm drain lift or raise the properties enough to where I can run the storm drain back to Boniface.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Walker? Ms. Pease?
This isn't my area of expertise, but is it possible to have an onsite storm water retention pond and whatever, you know?
Yeah, we could have a little bit of that, I'm sure. But kind of the position that I'm in right now is that it's all got to go somewhere. I don't even have that option. There's, the only thing that's been accounted for on this plot is for the, the actual runoff that is in, in existence right now, which is really nothing, because it's all just trees and dirt. So, you know, we don't really have any runoff at this time.
Runoff from your property?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Walker? Mr. Prues.
So, from that cul-de-sac, would a lateral dead at your, terminated at your property line, storm lateral help?
From where?
From that cul-de-sac, that temporary cul-de-sac?
Over by their Cottage Seven and Eight?
Yes. To, to, if they, if they terminate, if they put a lateral there from an existing manhole or inlet on the cul-de-sac, and dead, dead-end it at your property line for, for?
Storm drain.
For, for storm water from your, for futures, whoever develops the next piece, would that solve the problem?
It might. I would just have to see what the elevations are. I don't know the actual elevations. My engineer's here, he might be able to speak on that, so. But if the elevations are fine, yeah. I don't see why that would be a problem at all. I haven't, I have no problem with whatever direction the water goes, other than back to Boniface. You know, that's very expensive undertaking, so.
Okay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chair. I apologize to the commission for not including a good topography map. When the Plating Board reviewed and approved the plat a couple weeks ago, they had the benefit of having the topo map when they decided on this issue about drainage. It's also important to note that the gentleman speaking is, did the, the last plat of this property before the one that was, is, is in process now.
Any further questions for Mr. Walker? Okay, sir, I have a couple of questions. Number one, could you point out on any of those maps over there where your property is, just sort of outline it?
Yeah, this is my, this is the hall of the, this is the show hour, this is the waiting room that I stole.
Okay. Now, the general, you need to stand over by the, by the mic, we won't pick you up. Generally, which direction does the water flow now naturally? Is it flowing towards, there's seven and eight, does, generally in that direction, sort of to the northeast?
Yes, it goes to the northeast.
It goes in that direction?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's always on this.
Okay, very good. Okay, any further questions for Mr. Walker? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else listed to testify? Please state your name from the record.
Good evening, members of the Commission, Chair. My name's Mark Catini. I'm a civil engineer with Quest Engineering, and I'm here to propose a solution to my client's problem, Judd Walker. Before I do that, I'd like to hand out some information so you can be looking at it.
We stopped your timing while we're sorting these pieces of paper out in just a minute. Okay, we only have one of these small ones for each side, so we'll have to share this. Just a second while we get these things marked. Okay, we'll go ahead and back on the clocks here, so you can continue.
Okay, I just handed out one of these for each side. In red, you can see this is a, it shows you that the property falls from about 230 along Bragon Boniface to the northeast corner of Mr. Walker's property, about 200 feet. So that's a substantial drop. I have a larger version of the surveyor's map here, and you can see the spot elevations. Basically, in that northeast corner, our surveyor confirmed it is 200 feet, quite an area of. area of that. Now, the DOT drawing, if you look in the middle of your page, that manhole in the middle shows a stub coming to Mr. Walker's property behind, catch basin behind the concrete sidewalk and improvements. That's at 213 feet elevation, 13 feet above that 200 point. If you have to go 600 feet inside with a storm drain pipe onto Mr. Walker's property when he does future development, you're going to gain another three feet. So that's 16 feet vertical. Now you could say, Mr. Walker, go out to the middle of Boniface, cut open that street and find that main as low as you can. Even if he did that, it would be six feet above his lowest point on his property. So I'm just giving you some technical background to what Mr. Walker's talking about in an engineer's term. I believe the solution lies on page 11 of your packet, item 16. I would ask that you add tonight, one simple half-sentence. It's a long sentence, and us Italians are kind of known for that. I would add, item 16, it currently says to provide private development and acceptable drainage analysis and calculations. I would ask that you add these words, "And resolve the need for a drainage easement across proposed tract A4 for the storm water drainage leaving tract A2." And if I may show you that on your drawing.
We can't hear, we don't, we don't pick it up.
All right. The plat, this is tract A4, and we're saying, in the future, here's that manhole, put a manhole here, provide an easement, because right now, the city provides an outlet on their low corner with the storm drain pipe. We're just asking for the same storm drain pipe to be moved up to, it's being constructed, give us the same privilege to tie on for our future development, not our current development. They're taking care of that. They agree to take care of the small little water that's running off of there now. But we're saying, when we do a build-out, we need an easement across our property to convey that water.
Okay. Ms. Dean?
Through the chair. I'm having a hard time understanding why, since Judd Walker was the original owner of all these parcels, why he did not plan for that at that time, and now is bringing this up now that the property's been sold and somebody else wants to develop it. It just seems really odd. I'm trying to understand why we're sitting here and listening. I'm trying to understand that. Can you help me?
You bet I can. It's really simple. You're going to enjoy this story. Through the chair. It was in the middle of this winter that I had the privilege of having dinner with Mr. Walker on one of his trips to Anchorage. And so he told me the sale was going to go, has gone through. And so I asked Judd, I said, "Judd, have you done the master planning of this large parcel? You sold the middle part. He owns a property on both sides. He sold one-third of it, the middle third." And he looked at me, and he said, "No, I didn't think about it." I said, "Well, you and I have some work to do." And so I, that's the truth of what happened, and that's why I'm here tonight, is trying to do the master planning, get this thing so that he doesn't have a problem down the road.
From what I understand, is that Legacy is not interested in pursuing an easement at this time. Is that correct?
Absolutely correct, ma'am.
And so you're asking us to force them to accept a drainage easement?
I am asking to have something that's currently in code, and the code says, when we met with private development, the code says to take care of adjoining neighbors' water. And I believe that means pre-development and post-development.
Thank you.
Ms. Yoshimura?
Thank you for your testimony, Mr. Cuttini. Could you repeat the request for the added verbiage on number 16?
Yes, ma'am. Through the chair, Ms. Yoshimura. I would add, and recommend you add, the words "And resolve the need for a drainage easement across proposed tract A-4 for the storm water drainage leaving tract A2-1." And I would add, this, just separate of this, nothing that you would write, the numerous meetings with the staff at the municipality, they said the code doesn't give them clear direction in that. And I'm trying to get clear direction so we resolve a problem that's going to show up in the future.
One follow-up question. You say proposed tract A4. Has this property not been platted into the various tracts?
Through the chair, Ms. Yoshimura. The reason I use proposed tract A4, I'm trying to reflect the plating condition, the plating action that just transpired. So I'm using the title out of, that title for that piece of property as the proposed, because that plat isn't recorded yet. I could have used the existing one, but I think it's more appropriate since that's already, we have that as historical data.
Mr. Parks?
I just have one question. When you take a look at a lift station, what is the expense of doing that lift station? Have any idea? Lift station for?
You asking me?
Yes, that's correct.
And through the chair, I don't know the exact price, but I do know it's very cost prohibitive, and, because you're having to bring in electricity, usually three-phase power, and you have to have a very, very large volume to hold that water during peak runoff.
What are you asking for from Legacy from the standpoint of financial endeavor?
We're not asking them to do anything. Our client has offered to pay for any pipe oversizing, and there was a question earlier to my client, it's to extend it to his property. They already have agreed in their submittals for the construction they currently have on-site to extend the pipe. He's just asking two things. Make it big enough for the water at post-development on my side when it comes, and make an easement there so that water can go through an easement and not across private property.
Thank you. Mr. Bruce?
Well, you answered part of my question about the, I was going to ask you if your, if your client has broached the idea of upsizing the existing drainage infrastructure that's being proposed, would be proposed. I'm not quite sure about the, what that would cost, and what engineering, it would take engineerings to figure out how much that would, that would be. But short of a separate easement for future, his future development, where you're proposing, seems like it would cut, you know, you'd be dissecting the whole property. I mean, it'd be very expensive to cut through the existing facility and disrupt, disrupt all that after the fact. Based on where you pointed out, where you wanted a future easement for, for the storm drain runoff? From the northeast corner, I guess?
If I may address that. We're not asking that the easements go through buildings, that sort of stuff. We're asking just a simple easement that's on top of the storm drain pipe.
Why don't you pick up that and bring it over to the, bring the drawing over to your place there. You can't move the microphone to you, you got to come to the mic.
Thank you, sir. The, what we're saying is, this piece of pipe here would be oversized, the rest of it's 18, 24-inch anyway, up to this point. And so what we're saying is, whatever the municipality requires for an easement across this parcel here, you just follow on top of the pipe, wherever they decide to put that pipe, and you go there. And it's, it's no different than any other easement. It doesn't affect traffic, it doesn't, it just sits on top of the pipe. And the reason that we'd even ask that is because the municipal staff told us, we can't get in there and maintain it if it isn't, have some sort of easement so that we can maintain it, so someone can come in the future and clean out the manholes. It's for maintenance.
So what was, what was, what was the response to the, paying to the oversize of the, of the proposed storm drainage plan by the petition? Were they receptive?
No, they were not receptive. And I, they didn't tell me personally or my firm, that was what I understood, they told my client.
Okay.
Otherwise, if they were receptive, we wouldn't be here tonight.
So as it stands right now, the water would, if, if your client did nothing, all the water would basically flood?
No. Right now, if no development, as you see it today, they're putting a, a small diameter pipe to this corner, because this finished floor in this building is, they have a two-foot embankment, three-foot embankment here, and that finished floor is higher than this corner by three to four feet. So they know they have to drain it because they've already put up a fill section there. What we're saying is, you need to take it the next step, so when, whoever owns this land and develops it, they're going to have to either try to get out this way, because all this property drains this way, or someone's going to have to put a lot of fill here and to gravity flow, or pay for an expensive lift station to pump it up over here to Boniface.
And then, last question. In your estimation, on a future development for that lot, what elevation would they finish it to versus what the existing elevation? Is it already low and they would have to put fill in?
It is low, and my calculations are, if we went out to the main in the middle of the property here, which is already two-foot higher than this, the onsite pipe will use up three feet of vertical gain. So now we are five feet higher than the 200. So essentially, the bottom of the pipe would be elevation 205. You want four feet of cover over your storm drain, so you're at 209. My guess is finished floors are going to be 209, 210. If this one, if this finished floor currently, I believe, is at 202, you're, you're going to have this cottage looking up at an embankment eight feet taller up there. And I don't think that's very attractive.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Peace?
Yes, through the chair. A couple of questions. Mr. Cuttini, you mentioned the, that code says to accommodate the adjoining properties' runoff. That's, that's not in our conditional use approval, which we're considering here. So could you give us another citation that we might look up and see for ourselves, another code citation?
I can't. The only one that I have available with me tonight, back at my attache case, is the design criteria manual, where the staff keeps handing to us, it says you cannot adversely affect a property owner. And some consulting firms believe that's only for non-development. Our firm believes it's pre-development and post-development, you shouldn't affect your neighbors adversely.
Okay. And through the chair, a couple of other questions. Did you or and your client request this drainage easement at the plating board hearing, which I understood was June 1st or thereabouts? And if so, what was their response?
Essentially, the same verbiage was required at the plating board, and they did not add the verbiage, because as was pointed out, there was one general statement that says we resolve the need for drainage. And I was trying to get it very specific across, you know, which parcel and what we're talking about. So they have the need in there, they have that as a condition of plating, resolve the need. I was just taking the additional step to provide some clarity for everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wilson?
Do you have any information about any precedent for this action that you're requesting the commission to take? Do you know of any examples where you can point to?
Through the chair. No, sir, I don't.
But you believe that the response from the staff is, is not correct and should be changed?
That's correct. The staff in this community works very hard, they're very diligent, and sometimes they just can't get on all the minutia, the detail. I'm taking it down one level in that detail. And, and so, and I've, you know, I've had numerous meetings with the folks over in storm water, and they said, "If we can give clarity, we can deal with it. If we don't have clarity, then we're going to have to, you know, deal with it in more of a general sense." And it's really postponing a problem that'll occur when this land's developed at another time.
And the plating board had a, the plating authority had a drawing with the topo showing the future proposal, proposed development elevations?
They had the drawing of Legacy's. They did not have, they didn't have the benefit of this contour. After that meeting, our client hired the surveyor and went up and got those spot elevations so we could get something before you, and also take back to staff to show them what's existing out on our client's property.
And you did take it back to staff, and what was the response?
We have not taken it back to staff. We're going to do that after this, after this meeting here.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Patina?
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wishes to testify? Is there anybody else that wishes to testify? Ms. Peace, your name popped up here.
Yes, I do have a question for staff before we have a motion. I think it was Mr. McLaughlin. I think I heard you hint that this, this, the property owner?
Mr. Walker.
Mr. Walker, thank you. Owned and subdivided and sold this, this piece of property that now would need to receive his drainage. And I think the implication I drew from that was that this should have been dealt with, the drainage easement should have been requested at the time of sale or something like that. Is, I just wanted you to elaborate on that. If there is a, an error in oversight somewhere in a previous plating action, is it still in the interest of the municipality to make sure that the beleaguered parcel doesn't have any major development handicaps?
Through the chair, Ms. Peace. Drainage is normally dealt with, with plating actions. Mr. Walker recorded a plat of, of this property, creating this parcel, in 2010, just last year. He was the owner, and he recorded a plat. He prepared the property so that he could sell it to Legacy LLC. And I think that it occurred just as his representative spoke to, that sort of dealing with drainage was an afterthought or something that wasn't taken into account before. Now that there is a development plan for the property, you know, Legacy LLC is accommodating the existing drainage from the adjacent property, but doesn't want to accept additional drainage should, should the property redevelop and be paved hole or something like that, because it's B3 zone property. The plating board reviewed and dealt with this issue by approving, I'm sorry, two weeks ago, Legacy LLC brought a preliminary plat to the plating board to remove some easements and relabel some easements and relocate easements. They had to do with telephone and electric, they had to do with landscaping easements. It was, there were all kinds of crazy easements throughout the site, because this is a former mobile home trailer park. And so at that time, so two weeks ago, when the plating board looked at the plat and the relocation of easements, they, Mr. Cuttini spoke to the plating board, and the plating board considered, you know, all the arguments and decided to approve the plat with a condition stating, submit a grading and drainage plan and resolve the need for drainage easements. And so what that means is that the petitioner- And so what that means is that the petitioner has to provide a grading and drainage plan that's acceptable to, to private development and the folks in private development that deal with drainage. And then private development will also resolve the need to have a dedicated drainage easement for the site. So this is something that's going to be worked out with a subdivision agreement with the plat. So staff's recommendation just states that this is a plating issue, it should be dealt with by the plating board. That's staff's, I guess, guidance on that.
Thank you for that further explanation.
Ms. Yoshimura, do you want to ask a question now? Because we've still got, basically, the rebuttal from, you want to have the rebuttal first and then go further questions? Okay, fine. So petitioner, you've got, I believe, seven minutes and 29 seconds.
I'd like to thank everyone for their questions. I just, for clarification, to the chair, I just want to reiterate that the, there is huge sidewalks around the development. And we are amenable to resolving with planning additional connections. As far as communications to the adjacent landowner, there was public notice that was mailed out. The site was posted. I think that there's evidence in the staff packet that we've been working with Mr. Walker through DOT. We've been working with him on shared access issues. And as well, if you look at the response to Mr. Walker's comment from Mr. Hendrickson from Providence on page 36, you'll see that Miss Providence has in fact been amenable to working with Mr. Walker as soon as he realizes what his future developments may be. We do have some disagreement as far as the lift station and what all that would entail. And I'd like Tanya Hickok to speak to that.
Mr. Chair, my name's Tanya Hickok with LHKM. I am a civil engineer in the state of Alaska. We also had a surveyor do some field survey when we were doing our due diligence for the entire parcels before they were subdivided. And our survey data shows that the elevation of the invert of the storm drain system in Boniface is actually 200.3, the southern invert of that manhole. And I do agree that with Mr. Cutini, that the elevation of the northeast corner is the most low point, being around elevation 200. But in doing some calculations of a minimum slope of 0.3% on a 12-inch pipe, which is, you know, minimum criteria in the Design Criteria Manual, that elevation would bring about two feet. So the, as far as what amount you'd need to fill, would be about six feet. And as Mr. Cutini said, the site does range and grade all the way at the south from 225 feet all the way to that corner of 200 feet. So, and if you look at the site contours, existing contours, you'll notice that there's several spoil piles ranging in 220 feet down to 205 feet versus 215 feet for 202 feet. So there's quite a bit of elevation change on this entire site. There's, like I said, there's many spoil piles of remnant grading activities that occurred on the site. So it's reasonable to assume that the site would have to go through some considerable grading efforts in order to make it suitable for development. And I believe someone had asked a question about if they would have to have some sort of onsite retention. And onsite retention is required by the municipality. You are not allowed to discharge more than pre-development flows post-development. So there would have to be some sort of retainage onsite of the storm drain system. And we are maintaining the existing drainage as required by PMNE Private Development, the Design Criteria Manual requirements, as Mr. Cutini stated. However, there is also a requirement in the DCM that states if there is development and if they're crossing property lines, there needs to be an agreement between the existing property owner and the proposed property owner, that they're trying to cross drainage agreement. There has to be an agreement from both sides in order to have that drainage occur. So just looking at the grading that needs to occur as well as the unknown of the proposed development of that parcel, it seems very premature to require such a drainage easement onto the proposed tract A4 at this time. It also is important to note that this property, the proposed tract A4, already has obtained filling grade permits as well as footing and foundation permits for some of the cottages. And I believe that the storm drain pipe has already been installed throughout the development, maintaining the existing drainage flows from Mr. Walker's property onto our property, including that into the drainage plan of the proposed site. And I believe Providence did have some closing comments as well.
My name's Jerry Hendrickson. I work with Providence. I'm a construction manager for Providence Health and Services. Mr. Walker talked a little bit about communications and the information that he handed out tonight. I haven't seen any of that information. I don't know what it was that he, I can't really address any of the information that he had given you. We had been talking to Mr. Walker about the sites and some of the work that we're trying to do with him. And we've said, not knowing what he's going to do with that existing property, we don't know what to anticipate that would be flowing into our property as far as storm runoff or any of those features. The other thing that, I think that's the gist of it, is that we have been talking to him. We are interested in being good neighbors and stuff in the future to see what he is, you know, is going to develop in those areas. It's a little bit concerning that he sold the property clean of all easements and now wants to implement easements onto our property for this, this usage. And Mr. Walker is a developer and is, you know, is pretty wise on a lot of these property issues. So I can't speak to that. But I think that was the main things that we wanted to cover, I think. So, thank you.
Okay, fine. We've got some questions. So, Mr. Pruse? Okay, Mr. Hendrickson?
Yes.
Thank you. At the time of purchase of the property for Mr. Walker, did Providence provide a development plan with, and/or what elevations of proposed development plan to the person, to the people you were buying the property from?
No. At the time, we didn't know what the use of the property was going to be.
So in your professional background, would you think that if there was no site development plan with elevations, how would one know whether or not they needed drainage through your, through your development?
I wouldn't know that.
So the seller wouldn't know it either?
But the seller would know that any work that we would have to do on the site to--
How would he know that if you don't know what you're going to do with it?
You're right. He wouldn't know.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, is the petitioner done? Because you've still got a minute and 13 seconds.
I'm sorry, I have to speak. I spoke at the plating board meeting and rebuttal, and I want to go back and address Mr. Pruse's question.
Please state your name.
From Providence, my name is Tim Potter with LHKM. The Walkers owned the property for decades. They were aware of what the grading was all the time that they've had the property. The DCM is very clear, the Design Criteria Manual, that the downslope property has to accommodate the existing conditions at the time that they're going forward. Providence has done that. The DCM is also extremely clear that for those development flows and quality and quantity that come after the fact for development, those are to be mimicking the pre-development drainage. So Mr. Walker does have an option. He can accommodate, retain, detain, and let the water go out at the existing rate, which is what the code requires to happen. It seems a bit disingenuous to me, as an observer and bystander, to have a knowledgeable seller specifically subdivide a piece of property to sell it to someone after having it for decades, and then come back through the process to try and acquire improvements and easements and things that will accommodate their property when in fact it's not in line with the DCM. And I think it's an inappropriate process here for the conditional use that we're going for, to have Mr. Walker come forward and try and have you effectively take interest that Providence paid full price for after the fact. That's it.
Any questions for Mr. Potter? Thank you, sir. Public hearing is closed. Mad arrest for the commission. Mr. McLaughlin?
Sorry to belabor this. Ms. Pease, you had asked a question earlier about whether or not this meets the density, and the simple answer is yes. The 14 cottages at 12 people per cottage is 7.8 dwelling units per acre on this 26-acre site. The comp plan allows 20 dwelling units per acre, and the theoretical density dwelling units per acre allowed under the R3 is 29. So they're well below that. So that's, just to answer that issue.
Yes, if I may. I just wasn't sure how you calculate the cottages, which are not, they're not, they're dwelling units, but they're different from single-family dwelling units. So they have 12 people in each.
Yeah.
So is each one of those considered a dwelling unit, or is it considered 12 dwelling units? Just this more for my edification.
Yeah, I don't have an answer to that question. But what I did to try and help the commission was to factor each individual person living in each unit was a dwelling unit, which we probably wouldn't do. But I did that to just figure out what would be the maximum possible. So that's to say that this is a 26-acre site, 26 acres, there are 17 cottages. So there's less than one cottage per acre, okay? But if we add up 12 people per cottage, that's 204 people living there. Now, 204 people divided by 26 acres comes out to that 7.8 people per acre.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, mad arrest for the commission. And it looks like Ms. Yoshimura has made a motion and seconded by Ms. Pease. Would you please state your motion, Ms. Yoshimura, and speak to it?
I need a lesson in conditional use, and so I'd like to go into a committee of the whole.
Okay, is that, Ms. Pease, is that fine with you?
Yes.
Okay. Any objection? We're now in a committee of the whole.
So I'm totally confused. And in March, we had a case with Legacy before us for a conditional use. And we approved that conditional use. And as I understand it, the conditional use, because there was no plat and it was just one parcel, was for the entire site. Is that correct?
Through the chair, Ms. Pease, that's correct.
I'm Ms. Yoshimura.
I'm sorry, Ms. Yoshimura, I apologize.
All right. I don't even look like Nancy. Well, we don't always agree, particularly about trails and sidewalks, but other than that. Okay, so there's, so there's a conditional use over the entire property. So what comes first, a plat or a conditional use, generally speaking? And so, and so I guess my question is, so they were at the plating board, but they were not at the plating board to track out and make two or three different tracks. They were only at the plating board to eliminate some easements and that sort of thing. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So a couple of months ago, we also had a conditional use for a residential development. And that residential development showed us the entire site plan. And now we're here, which is what I think is appropriate on large pieces of property, that we should see an entire site plan in order to approve a conditional use. And so that discussion was made at the March hearing before PNC for Legacy LLC. So now they're back with a conceptual, three or four different versions of a conceptual site plan. So my question to you is, isn't this a bit unusual? Wouldn't one normally do it like the way it was done with Solero? And we would approve a conditional use for an entire site once we saw the entire site plan? Or if a petitioner wanted to do only a partial site plan, wouldn't they then track out that particular section?
Through the chair, Ms. Pease, I think that you're getting a little bit, digging in a little bit deep on it. I'm sorry, Ms. Yoshimura. Apologize. Ms. Yoshimura, I think, so the answer to your question is that the, this, the final conditional use that was approved in March was for the, was for the entire tract. The final conditional use amendment, which is proposed tonight, deals with the whole tract. However, it reserves development areas for the future. And the petitioner just wanted to show you what they plan to do with those development areas in the future. They, they haven't decided what they're going to do, but, but the commission asked, hey, if you return to us again, show us, you know, the, a full build-out next time. And so they've attempted to do that. In terms of plating, plating's a different thing. And that had to do with, you know, essentially, there were some telephone electric easements. There were some, I can't think of all the names of the easements, but there, there were crazy dead-ended easements right in the middle of the parcel. And that it was just cleaning up the parcel for, for development.
Can you point to me, can you give me some historical precedents for approving amendments, I guess, an amendment to a conditional use without a definitive site plan?
Well, conditional use, you can just swap that word in for site plan. So you, the commission approved a site plan in, in March, and now Providence wants to change the site plan. They want to move the Commons Building a little bit closer to the cottages. And that couldn't be handled administratively. It, even this minor change is, we consider it a major amendment and returned to the commission to, to review and approve this change to the site plan. And it's for the full site. Don't let the concept site plan, you know, confuse you. You know, in the second or third, on the page three of the, of my report, it just sort of goes into what concept approval is. And it's just saying that, you know, they've shown, as the commission requested, they've shown what a full build-out could look like. They provided four options of what it might look like. And they're just asking for a concept approval, which is, is very general. It doesn't approve the use. It doesn't approve the site plan. It doesn't approve the intensity, no precise design. It just is a concept. In our code, it just, there's an allowance for doing concept approval and final approval. And in most cases, rather than go through both steps, an applicant will just apply for final. But because the commission wanted to see what a full build-out would look like, they've, they've done that through, through this concept process. It's just showing it to you, you know. I hope that answers your question, that, that the plating is, can come after final approval of a conditional use. That's what happened in this case. It's just that the petitioner decided they needed to return, decided they wanted to change their site plan, and then the planning office required them to return before the commission for that change in the site plan.
So when Legacy goes into its next phase-- So when Legacy goes into its next phase, whatever that phase is, then it will return to this commission?
Absolutely.
Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Does anyone else have any questions, or is anyone else confused?
Anybody else have any questions for Mr. McLaughlin? Okay, yes, go ahead, Ms. Wilson.
I asked the gentleman who spoke latest here about whether there was a precedent for this, and he couldn't think of any, for this drainage issue. And I'm not sure exactly what they're requesting. Could someone explain to me again what it is that the parties that spoke about drainage amendments being needed? What were they proposing, and what was the response of the petitioner?
So, just to be clear, staff's recommendation is that this was dealt with in front of the plating board. But to answer your question, the adjacent landowner, Mr. Walker, owns property that drains onto Providence's property. They, Mr. Walker doesn't know how he is going to, you know, sell this property or develop the property, but he knows that it drains onto his neighbor's property. He wants to, he wants his neighbor, Providence, to provide a drainage, a dedicated drainage easement, so that if, in the future, so in the future, when his property is developed, that it would be able to continue the drainage that it has, and if the drainage is increased, that he would be able to, that Providence would accommodate his increase in drainage from the development of his property. That's what he's seeking. The way the plating board dealt with this was just to allow the normal process to proceed, which is, you know, private development looks at the drainage plan and the design criteria manual and decides how to handle the drainage from one property to another. And this is, you know, not rocket science, this is not a, this is very common. Every hillside subdivision drains onto the neighbor's property. This is just, I mean, drainage is a major issue. It's one of the biggest things of concern whenever private development looks at these. It's, you know, it's, they look at, are the roads built to standard? Can emergency services get in? But they're also looking at drainage, because water is really important.
And did you also hear what I heard, that the petitioner indicated a willingness to work with the neighbor?
Yeah, Mr. Walker, I'm sorry, Mr. Cotini representing Mr. Walker has said that they would be willing to pay for the, so Providence has provided, you know, provided a drainage pattern for Mr. Walker, and the cost of increased drainage, or increased drainage would need bigger pipes, it costs more money, things would need to be upgraded. And Mr. Walker is apparently is offered to pay for any upgrades that are needed.
Thank you. Ms. Yoshimura.
How wide would this drainage easement be?
I believe drainage easements are usually 20-foot width. Believe that's the case. On hillsides, I know when you're talking downhill property, it's always a 20-foot, Watershed Management Services for, like, drainage asks for 20-foot wide easements. But I think in urban cases where the things are piped, I think it's like, it might be even 10-foot, but I can't tell, 10 or 20.
So this is a pipe that theoretically would be in a drainage easement that would run underneath the parking lot? Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, perhaps, I'm not sure. Can I just say that the plating board, with every plat, reviews drainage issues? And so I think that, you know, we usually don't, the commission usually doesn't spend as much time talking about drainage, and it's because it's usually handled with a plat.
Ms. Pease?
Just when we speak to our findings, I'm going to try to summarize what Mr. McLaughlin said about the residential density, and so I just wanted to verify that when you calculated residential density, you considered each bedroom essentially as a dwelling unit.
Through the chair, Ms. Yoshimura. I'm just kidding. Yes, yes, each bedroom.
Thank you.
Any further questions, Ms. Pease?
No.
Okay, we need to, if anybody doesn't have any other questions, we need to get out of the committee of the whole. Movement, Mr. Frederick, seconded by Ms. Dean. Any objection? Okay, we're no longer in the committee of the whole. The matter now rests with the commission. Need a positive motion. Okay, Ms. Pease made the motion, is there a second? Been seconded by Mr. Parks. Ms. Pease, would you please state your motion and then speak to it?
Yes, in the matter of case 2011-058 regarding the Legacy's nursing home on Boniface Parkway, I move for approval with the department recommended conditions on pages nine through 11 of our packet with the following amendment, okay, sorry, I guess there are two approvals here.
Let's do the A first.
Yeah, first the amendment to the final conditional use permit, and the recommendations for that one are on pages nine through 11 of our staff packet. And I would like to apply all of them to this approval with one, with a couple of changes to the condition number 14, so that, I'll read the whole thing and show you where I'm going to propose to insert a couple of words. It reads, "Verify with the Traffic Engineering Division and the Non-Motorized Transportation Coordinator that the width and design of the pedestrian pathways to the Commons Buildings and the sidewalk along the driveway," and I would add, "and crossings where any path crosses a driveway," to ensure that, and I would replace the word "it" with "pathways and sidewalks," so pathways and sidewalks meet minimum guidelines, and then continue with the sentence. That's the only change I have, so if there's a second, I'll speak to it.
Okay, it's been seconded, is that agreeable, Mr. Parks? Okay, fine, please speak to it, Ms. Pease.
The commission has reviewed this conditional use permit fairly recently. The main purpose of this amendment appears to be changing the location of the Commons Building to make it more accessible and convenient. We've reviewed the various changes, we heard, and the sidewalks and pathways came up. Condition 14 enables further discussion, for example, to make sure that all the crossings are in place. Also, we heard that a five-foot width of a sidewalk will accommodate a caregiver and a wheelchair. There may be some need for two wheelchairs to be able to pass each other. I'm sure that the discussion with the non-motorized coordinator will resolve those design details. We heard extensively from an adjoining property owner about drainage concerns and a request for additional drainage easement across this property. We heard a very good explanation from staff that there is in the plat, which was approved on June 1st, a condition for resolving drainage, so there will be further discussions with staff on that. We also heard that the current plat requires drainage across this property from the adjoining property. The current amount of drainage will be accommodated, and that the design criteria manual doesn't allow a substantial increase in the drainage once the site is developed. So it appears that between the design criteria manual and the plat approval, the drainage issue has been resolved, and therefore, under our Code 2150-020, general standards, in particular D4, the maintenance of compatible and efficient development patterns will be achieved with regard to drainage. And in addition, it appears that we've met the, through the conditions, 2150-030, conditional use standards for healthcare facilities and related institutions. So I will be supporting this.
Okay, are there any amendments that we need to discuss to this? Mr. Pruse.
I'd like to propose an amendment on the sidewalks, that the additional crossing sidewalk, equal distance to the, to, two equal distance sidewalks, crossing pedestrian pathways, I don't know what you'd call it, on the, lack of a better term, the open area where there's showing one existing, to add an additional one that services from the main parking lot cottages three and four, kind of equal distance between those two?
Is that covered in your wording to 14, Ms. Pease?
Not specifically, no, the, no, 14 requires meeting minimum guidelines of DCM and the American with Disabilities Act, and I think what Mr. Pruse is talking about is something that's site-specific, he's trying to reduce walking distances, so I'm amenable to that.
Okay, so you want to have a 17, then?
That's correct.
Okay, well, can you please restate it then, please?
I'll do my best.
It's been seconded, by the way, by Mr. Parks, so go ahead and restate your motion.
The motion is to add an additional sidewalk north of the pedestrian sidewalk that would split the difference between Cottage three and four from the main parking lot.
Okay, and it's been seconded by Mr. Parks. Okay, you want to speak to that, please?
Yeah, basically, what this does is there's one existing sidewalk already through, through, lack of a better term, where the snow storage, I guess, is going to go, or maybe some future parking lot. This is just a, another access to access the cottages north, the northern cottages, specifically two, three, and four, so that those people that park in the eastern large parking lot do not have to go all the way back to the main Commons area, proceed north across the road, and then back towards Cottage three and four.
Okay, does everybody understand the amendment? Yeah, Ms. Pease?
I'm trying to understand it. I don't quite understand, if there's a shortcut to the parking lot, then I don't see a pathway through the parking lot, so is that part of it?
Yeah, it's adding an additional pathway sidewalk through, through, from the parking lot to, I guess, the best way to describe it is between Cottage three and four from the parking lot.
So that would be, that would be from the parking lot northeast, but then what about, once somebody crosses into the parking lot, how do they navigate the parking lot?
There would be a crossing of the, of the, of the road right there. I missed your question.
Okay, so there's no pathway that comes through the parking lot? This is just to get people in the parking lot over to the cottages? It's not to get the cottage people a shortcut access to the common building?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, does everybody understand the motion? Is there any objection? No objection, that passes, so that's condition 17. Any further amendments? Okay, Ms. Yoshimura.
Well, before I make this amendment, I'd like to say that a drainage plan is always site-specific, and that there was no way, in my opinion, for Mr. Walker to know when he sold the property, what the site plan and the elevation and the grading plan was going to be for this particular parcel when he sold it. So on that basis, I have to consider Mr. Walker, like any other adjacent property owner. And so therefore, I would add, as an amendment to item number 16, provide to private development an acceptable drainage analysis and calculation to include adjacent property.
Three words, "to include adjacent property." Four words. Okay, you want to speak, speak to that, please?
Well, I did.
Okay.
I don't have any other comment, other than what I prefaced my motion with.
Okay, fine, it's been seconded by Mr. Pruse. Mr. Wilson?
Just clarification, isn't the wording, as it's typed in here, cover what your intent is?
No, I don't believe it does.
Don't they normally take adjacent properties into consideration when reviewing a drainage plan at the planning department, or private development? Not clear enough?
It's not quite, I'd just like four more words.
Okay, Ms. Frederick?
So, just to be clear, you're not suggesting that Legacy provide a drainage easement to Walker or anybody else, right?
No, I think what these words would mean to me, provide private development acceptable drainage analysis and calculation to include adjacent properties, that that's an issue yet to be resolved. But I want it to take into consideration the adjacent properties.
Any further comments? Is there any objection?
Yes.
Okay, we'll have to use our machines. A yes vote adds "to include adjacent properties" to condition 16. That passes. Is there any further amendments? Is there any objection? Wait a second. Do we need some findings on these things? Ms. Pease?
I thought I, I did, I did add, make some findings maybe before these amendments, so I made findings regarding the drainage and the pathways will be resolved further.
You feel comfortable with that?
And that we met the conditions of approval under code.
Okay, all right, so is there any objection? That passes unanimously. Okay, now let's move on to the B portion of this, concept approval of conditional use for the entire site. Mr. Frederick's made the motion, been seconded by Ms. Pease, and Mr. Frederick, would you please state your motion and then speak to it?
Yeah, in the matter of case 2011-058, move for approval of the concept plan for development of the entire site, I expose the proposed tract A4. Okay, we'll do it as it's said in the...
It's A11, right?
A11, I'm sorry, Waldeck subdivision addition two.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Okay, and it's been seconded by Ms. Pease, and Mr. Frederick, I just want to make sure that we're talking about what this concept approval is. I believe it's figures five, A, B, C, D, and, yeah, A, B, C, and D, those are the five possible... A, B, C, D, and, yeah, A, B, C, and D, those are the, the five possible, or the four possible configurations, I believe.
No, I think figure four is the conceptual master plan, and then the five A, five B, five C, and five D provide the alternatives to it.
Okay.
So that's what I would, would say is included in the, in the motion. The petitioner has provided, as requested by the commission, a concept development plan for the, for the tract, and, uh, I believe that it, as the staff has said, um, it meets the general standards of conditional use for the tract for nursing home, so my plan on supporting the motion.
Okay, is there any other comments from the commissioners? Mr. Pruse?
Do we know what, on figure five C, what the unlabeled building is for, or what, I guess I'm trying to figure out what, I guess it would be the south, south's ten block?
Steph, can you, on figure five C, do you know what that brown rectangle is down there in the south?
Yes, it's, uh, the petitioner's calling it a transitional care unit, and what that is, is, um, a, um, a space where someone who has been injured and could not, after an operation or whatever, could not return home, and would need to be cared for for up to sixty days, they, uh, they would be taken care of in this location before returning home. So if you had a double knee operation, and you didn't have family to pick you up and care for you, you would go to this place, and it has to do with insurance and the rest, but it's, it's another type of healthcare facility rehabilitative care type, type thing, and it's called a transitional care unit. You'd tran, transition from the hospital to this place, and then hopefully home.
That's your question, Mr. Pruse?
Uh, yeah, and then, then on figure five B and five D, there's a building to the, just to the east of the Boniface Parkway, between the proposed two entrances, that's not labeled, that I can see, what that would be.
Um, well, the, the, the wing-looking building in five D is the proposed transitional care unit, which would come with a, a future, there would be descriptions of all of these buildings in a future, a submittal for an amendment to the conditional use permit, a site plan that was just acted upon by, by the commission. I can't speak to anything more than a transitional care unit.
I would suggest we don't get overly concerned, because they'll have to come back to us anyway.
Yeah.
But we're dealing with these things in sort of a conceptual nature.
Yeah, I just, I just saw the unique dimension of it, so I thought they had maybe a pretty good idea what it was going to be.
Right. Okay, I see, Mr. McLaughlin, you just spoke, Ms. Pease, you, you clicked off?
Be ready for findings.
Okay, well, let's, let's, Mr. Wilson's ahead of you in the queue, so...
I was wondering if, if they produce five alternatives in their, in the conceptual plan, does that limit them at all, or, I mean, are these definitive, or are they just suggestive?
Um, the commission and the petitioner are not limited by this concept approval in any way. On page three in the middle, I, I created a paragraph that is indented with margins, and I could read from that, but the answer's no.
Okay, Ms. Pease?
I was going to add some findings, but I wanted to make the motion to go first.
Okay, wait, okay, wait a minute, Mr. Pruse may have some other, let him go first.
Just a, uh, information, is this, are we doing this for five years, or is this the, I heard someone say that's traditionally eighteen months, and are we doing this for five years, I just? And that's the department's recommendation for five years?
Uh, through the chair, Mr. Pruse, it's an excellent question, I didn't want to raise it, but the petitioner on the floor today asked for the approval, instead of being for eighteen months, want, wants the approval to be for five years, staff has no objection.
So is that in this, what we're approving, or does someone have to make?
We need to probably, if that's going to be added, we need to add that.
I didn't know.
As, no, it needs to be added as a condition.
Okay. I thought it was in here, and I just wanted to clarify, but I guess...
No, it isn't, this is, it's here, so... Okay, so, we've got a motion on the floor from Mr. Frederick, been seconded by Ms. Pease, and it appears that we need an amendment to this particular, uh, motion to approve to add the five years for the time that it runs. So, I'm looking for a motion, positive motion. Because if not, it goes to the standard eighteen months as defined in the code. Okay, you've got a question, Mr. Pruse?
Well, I was just wondering, I, I think from a conceptual standpoint, I think eighteen months is pretty quick, although I think five years is pretty long, and I was, but maybe a compromise of three years. I mean, they did spend a lot, at our request, to give, bring this forward, for us to take a look at, and, and they did spend some time, effort, and dollars to give us, present this package to it, which I appreciate. I just, I just, I'm kind of caught between eighteen months not, being kind of short, and five years being kind of long, and throw out eighteen months, or three years as an, as an alternative.
Well, you make your motion, and we'll deal with it. Okay, Ms. Pruse has moved, and Ms. Pease has seconded, would you please state your motion?
My motion is to, to, I guess, instead of going for eighteen months on a construction, approval of this conceptual development, to extend it to eight, or thirty-six months or three years.
It's been seconded by Ms. Pease, is there any discussion? Is there any objection? That is approved. Okay, wait a minute, there is an objection, don't hit the button yet, okay?
Thanks a lot.
Okay, Ms. Yoshimura?
You know, I think funding for nonprofits is always a tenuous and a difficult circumstance, and so, um, I feel that the petitioner's request for five years is not, is not unreasonable. So, can I amend your...
Uh, no, no, we'll vote this one up and down, and then go from there. Okay, so there is objection, is there any other comments? Okay, use your machines, go ahead and get set up. You ready? Okay, yes vote, gives them thirty-six months, no vote, brings us back to the original here. Okay, um, okay, we've got another motion to amend. Yeah, approve, okay, amend, seconded by Ms. Pease, please state your motion, Ms. Yoshimura.
Um, do I actually have to amend anything for conceptual approval for, for five years?
Yes.
Do I have to?
Yes, you do.
Okay, all right, so I move to, um, have a five-year, um, period for the conceptual plan.
Okay, it's been seconded by Ms. Pease. Uh, you want to speak to your motion, Ms. Yoshimura?
Um, I think nonprofit funding is always a challenge, and particularly in today's economic climate, in that it takes additional time for large nonprofits to seek and secure adequate funding for large projects such as this.
Anybody else have any comments? Is there any objection?
I had a comment.
Okay, Ms. Pruse?
My, my comment is, is pretty simple, is that whether it's three years or five years, I agree with the fact of raising money, but also that in three years, they could actually reproduce the same thing and put it in front of us again, and give us an update, versus, versus five years from now, which, again, I think is a very long time, I'd like to see it, uh, in three years, and, and it may need some modification again, so, just more informative, and that was my, that's my comment.
Any further comments? Is there any objection? Okay, then that passes, they've got five years to come back to us. Okay, now, um, we've got to deal with the main motion. That's correct, right? Okay, and so, it's, the main motion was, um, by Mr. Frederick, and then it was seconded by Ms. Pease, so the main motion is there, and we need some findings for this right Ms. Pease?
Um, yes, with regard to the findings, I had asked Mr. McLaughlin in an email to expand a little bit on the compatibility of this proposal with the comprehensive plan policies that he had stated in his packet, but then not really addressed, and he did provide an email to us, and I would say that his explanation provides findings, except that I would, would put in a different finding for residential policy fourteen, conservation of residential lands for housing is a high community priority, and new residential development at density is less than identified, and the neighborhood or district plan is discouraged. We don't have a neighborhood or district plan here, so we're going by the density proposed under the R3 zoning, and Mr. McLaughlin has calculated that each bedroom constitutes a dwelling unit, so therefore, even if only the eight cottages shown are built out at twelve residents per dwelling, we come up with ninety, eight times twelve, ninety-six, dwelling units, and that is, you know, what, within the target for R3 zoning, it's not, it's not underbuilding. Now, whether that's a correct interpretation, whether an individual bedroom is a dwelling unit, I don't know, but we have achieved some degree of, of density, which is anticipated by the zoning.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Pease. Any other comments? Okay, is there any objection for conceptual approval for five years? No objection, that passes unanimously. We're going to take a five-minute break. Calling the June thirteenth, two thousand and eleven, meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission back to order, we'll now deal with case two thousand and eleven zero five nine, Cook Inlet Housing Authority rezoning to RO Residential Office District. Uh, we'll please hear the staff report.
I, yes, Mr. Chair, uh, this is a petition to rezone tract D1 Pendlin Park, that was created in nineteen seventy-five by a plat seventy-five eighty-three, from D2 Residential Development District Zone to RO Residential Office District Zone. Uh, the D2 was basically a transitional-type zoning district, the intent of the D2 was that development on D2-zone property should be similar to that of the R2M district. This is a little over a four-acre site, and it's located north of Debar Road and east of Airport Heights Drive. It is currently undeveloped, it's heavily forested with, with natural vegetation. This is basically a housekeeping matter, as the D2 zoning district is proposed to be eliminated upon adoption of the revised Title XXI. Upon the adoption of Title XXI rewrite, the municipality will rezone D2 and D3-zoned land to a zoning district that is appropriate based on the development of the area in which the property is located. In this case, via, by letter that was sent out to owners of D2 property, and to this owner in particular, the RO zone was deemed to be the appropriate zoning district for this site. It is in an area of mixed zoning districts and mixed uses. D2 residential district to the north, south, and east, and RO to the west, developed with regional hospital and office buildings, the D2, um, zone property to the, is residential. But further north is the Northway Mall, it's zoned I1, located further east and northeast is zoned I1, and it's developed with a mix of office buildings, the daily news, a post office, and B3-zone property located at the intersection of Debar and Burgau is developed with utility, substations, restaurants, churches, car washes, Costco, and the like. So the RO zoning district was found to be the most appropriate, it does meet the goals of the, the policies of Anchorage twenty-twenty, it preserves residential, potential residential uses on this property, and it is in keeping with the mixed uses in the surrounding area. Adjoning rights away are constructed, and they do provide vehicular access to the site. The petition site is also served with, by public utilities and services. At the time of this writing, there were no, there were no development plans for this particular site, but however, the petitioner's wish to proceed with this rezoning now, rather than waiting for the adoption of Title XXI, for the municipality to proceed with the rezoning, because proceeding now with the RO zoning district will allow them to develop plans and proposals for development of this site. The proposed RO zoning is compatible with the mix of uses in the surrounding area. The department does recommend approval of the rezone petition, subject to two special limitations. I have revision to the first recommended special limitation that deals with height of the building. The height of the building is being addressed, because this property does sit at a higher elevation, and that any proposed development on this site hopefully would not overwhelm the adjacent properties which are basically currently developed with residential uses. And the rewording for the special limitation, number one, is the building height shall not exceed fifty feet or four stories of non-residential uses, except by conditional use. The second, um, the second special limitation deals with transition buffering landscape with a fifteen-foot planting bed width to be along the north and east property boundaries. Landscaping meeting the requirements of AMC twenty-one forty-five two hundred shall be installed with development of the property, the existing natural vegetation... The existing natural vegetation would provide the best buffer if left undisturbed within that 15 feet, and it may be used, may be retained to meet the transition buffering standards. Thank you.
Any questions for staff? Ms. Pruez?
Yeah, on recommendation number one, limited to 50 feet and shall not exceed three stories, what is normal, the normal height restriction on RO SL?
It's unrestricted except for FAA, and this, the revised recommended special limitation would limit it to 50 feet or four stories of non-residential uses.
So, not three stories, four stories?
Four stories. And then the last phrase of that revised special limitation would be, except by conditional use. So, if I may read that revised special limitation number one, building height shall not exceed 50 feet or four stories of non-residential uses, except by conditional use.
So, from a, my memory serves me, this is actually on the approach end of Merrill Fields, is that correct?
Mr. Chair, Ms. Pruez, that is correct, and I checked the airport fly zones, and this is just outside the airport fly zone.
So, did you check what the FAA maximum elevation would be for that area?
It's not impacted by the FAA. It's just outside the airport, the FAA fly zones, flights.
Well, maybe approach path, but there's, I mean, even downtown Anchorage has a minimum or maximum because of Merrill Field, so I'm just curious if, it's typically, how far away nautical miles is what they'll let you do, especially on approach, and I'm just curious if you knew what that was?
Mr. Chair, no, I don't, because I relied on the FAA maps that just gave the approach zone, and it was outside the flight zone area.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for staff? Okay, before we get started with the petitioner's portion of this, I want to go ahead and read once again the rules. I'm doing this before every, every action now, just to make sure that everybody understands what the rules are. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established by the commission rules of procedure. Petitioners have 10 minutes, and part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representatives of groups such as community councils or PTAs have five minutes, and individuals have three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after the Planning and Zoning Commission's final decision. And finally, any individual may request written findings from any commission decision within seven days. So, let's go ahead and open the public hearing now, and hear from the petitioner. You have 10 minutes, and you may reserve.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, my name is Tim Potter with DHKM. With me tonight is Tyler Robinson from Cook Inlet Housing Authority. I'd like to reserve a minimum of two minutes for rebuttal. This is a four-and-a-half, or 4.15-acre tract currently zoned as D2, as the staff has indicated. The municipality did forward a letter to Cook Inlet Housing Authority as the owner, and indicated that the D2 zoning district would go away upon formal adoption of the revisions to Title 21, and had no timeframe associated with that. Cook Inlet Housing Authority, as a fairly sophisticated property owner and developer, decided to go ahead and move forward on their own, not waiting for what could be an additional prolonged period before final adoption, since it's only been nine or 10 years to date. So, given the choice, RO was the selected zoning district, and Cook Inlet Housing has applied for that. The site topography is pretty important on this piece of property. Adjacent to Debar Road, the, the site grade is right even with Debar and Airport Heights. The northern half of the site is down about 16 feet, and there's a precipitous drop-off which was part of the original gravel extraction site which resulted in the Pendlin Park trailer facility or mobile home site. And in that, that is about a story or so that's below, and we asked for the modification to the three-story limit to accommodate a potential subterranean floor that could be parking or other support services, so you'd have three stories above grade and one story below grade. And unfortunately, the only zoning district that really delves into the issue of, what do you count the story below grade, is the B2 zoning district downtown. So, in fact, if it would have stayed at three stories, by the way of the calculation of the heights of the building, it would have been two floors above grade and one below, which wouldn't, I think, really reflected what this property could be utilized for and the best use of the land and the existing topo. So, based on those specific topo conditions and the proximity of the property to the hospital, grocery stores, a lot of other services, jobs, and that, we did request that the building heights be set at 50 feet and four stories of non-residential, and the staff worked with us on that after they understood what the specifics of the site were, and we had no question with the condition number two, which had to do with the buffers, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
You have 4 minutes and 51 seconds for rebuttal. Actually, six minutes and something. Okay, you only used 4:51. Okay, any questions for Mr. Potter? Okay, fine.
Okay, a quick answer to Mr. Pruez's question earlier, is that the flight path is not directly over this, but the slope comes up and then flattens out. At that flat mount ceiling, you could, depending on your floor-to-ceiling height, you can get about 10 or 12 stories. The hospital next door is about seven, so.
Is there anybody that wishes to testify? Is there anybody that wishes to testify? Apparently not, Mr. Potter. You've got six minutes and something for rebuttal.
I could say a lot of things about Connie draining water onto my property or something else, but I won't do that, so if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for Mr. Potter? Okay, thank you. Public hearing is closed, the matter rests with the commission. Take a positive motion. Mr. Parks is moved, Ms. Dean is seconded. Mr. Parks, will you state your motion and speak to it, please?
In the matter before the commission, 2011-075, I recommend, or make a motion that we approve this request by the petitioner with the changes on page eight from the Department recommendations of four stories and by conditional use, if they want to go higher than that, and, that's all. And the rezoning of this, of this property, I'm sorry, thank you.
Okay, I believe the number is 2011-059, not 075.
059?
Yes, okay. You said 075, I think. Okay, Mr. Parks, would you like to speak to your motion?
Sure. I think it's been proven here today that we're, this is more for the sake of getting this property into the, into the marketplace with an effective use, and I think that what we have heard here tonight is that this property does meet the requirements of this new zoning request, and I think it should be moved from that standpoint.
Any further comments from members of the commission? Do we have any findings that we'd like to put in this? I'll go ahead and attempt here, then. It looks like it complies with Policy 5, Policy 8, and Policy 9 of the Comprehensive Plan, conforms to that. Any further comments from the commission? Any objection? Okay, we'll move right on to our final case for this evening. It is case number 2011-061, Daybreak Adult Daycare, and this is a zoning conditional use for habilitative care facility. So, if we could hear staff report, please?
Yes, this is an amendment to a conditional use to allow an expansion of an adult care facility in an R6 residential district. An amendment to a conditional use is requested to allow an expansion of the adult care facility for individuals with Alzheimer's disease and related disorders. Due to increasing demand, Daybreak is experiencing a need to expand their facilities to serve an ever-growing population. Currently, Daybreak serves 20 to 25 clients per day. The expansion will allow the facility to serve a maximum of 50 clients on a daily basis. In terms of their landscaping, there are some rather considerable gaps in the landscaping around the perimeter of the property. One, just starting now to deal with the parking area, one birch tree and three shrubs should be added to the area on sheet L1.0, and the L-shaped space between the three-space parking area and the seven-space parking area in front of the building addition. As some of the photos in the packet show, the asphalt runs right up to the edge of the building, leaving really no space for landscaping, but in this one area, there is room to put in a tree and three shrub, three shrubs. The provision of visual screening was one of the special limitations that was placed on the facility in 1984. The native vegetation buffer at the northwest corner of the site will be removed due to the grading needed to put in their detention basin. The landscape plan shows a replacement of some of these trees. They plan to put in seven trees, which is really an inadequate replacement buffer, and additional eight trees should be added, and also 24 shrubs with those. Typically, with every tree, three shrubs are required. The majority of clients arrive via anchor rides, and about 75% of those come, are transported through people mover anchor rides. The remainder are dropped off by family members. The lighting levels are higher than recommended, thus the lighting plan should consider parking lot lighting with an average of 0.5 to 1.0 horizontal foot candles instead of the proposed 1.2 foot candles, and also the vertical foot candles at the property lines abutting the residential development should not exceed 0.1. I received this afternoon some comments from, or questions from Ms. Pease. Ms. Pease, do you want me to go through those? Yes, please. Okay, there are about five issues that Ms. Pease raised. One, first one concerned the number of clients, and on the top of page 35, it says, "There's a need to increase the square footage of the building that is driven by the need to serve more seniors in our community. The proposed expansion will allow Daybreak to more than double the current number of daily participants." Yet, on the middle of page 36, it says, "The project maintains the concept of low-density development, as it will not increase the density since the project will not add participants to the program." I also noted this when I was reading through the narrative, and I called the, Mr. Falconberry, who is the petitioner's representative, to ask him about these conflicting statements, and he admitted that, yes, there was a mistake there. To clarify, Daybreak does intend to increase the number, but not to exceed the 50 capacity that they're allowed to do. Under their original conditional use that they received back in 1984, they were limited to 50 participants, and they don't intend to go beyond that. The second question dealt with the limit on number of service to clients, and in addition, her question was that they are non-residential. Yes, they are non-residential, they're just there for the daytime, and go home at night, and it will not exceed 50 patients at any one time. Her third question dealt with parking. She asked, "Why allow increase in paved parking if the number of clients will stay the same? Do staff support the community council's request for a variance to ensure that parking does not exceed the minimum actually required? Staff, please provide a calculation for the minimum." The number of parking spaces that they show are the minimum that they are required to provide under the code. They aren't providing any more than, than they needed. But I have the calculations, and I can go over them, but before I do that, I wanted to convey to the commission that it is the intent of the petitioner to pursue with the traffic department a reduction in parking. So, if they are successful in obtaining that, they will reduce the size of the parking The only parking, additional parking needs they see is they may need another one or two additional employees that are needed for almost doubling in patients they will see on a, on a, on a daily basis, but that's only one or two more parking spaces. Her next question dealt with retention of trees. "To meet community council concerns, will staff support a condition to ensure that landscape buffering from residential uses is L3 as defined in Title 21 rewrite, which is, would be a 15-foot wide bed or buffer area? Natural vegetation to be retained will be flagged with durable flagging or construction fencing sufficiently durable to last through the construction." One, I don't think we need to use the L3 as defined in the Title 21 rewrite for a simple reason that they are here to amend their conditional use, and by the very nature that they're here as for a conditional use, means that if the condition, if the commission wants to set conditions on the property that would enable it, the property have less impact on their neighbors via a 15-foot buffer that's perfectly within their authority to do, or your authority to do. I would amend the suggested wording to say, "Natural vegetation to be retained will be protected with a six-foot chain link construction fencing prior to the start of any construction activities." We have found that flagging doesn't really work well, in fact, even the orange snow fence doesn't really work. What we have found that does work is temporary chain link fence that's set up on-site, temporarily has little, little aluminum feet it sets on, or concrete blocks it can set on with pre-drilled holes in the block, and you just set the panels in the block, or just set the panels up on the, of aluminum feet, either way, but we have found it, it really works very well. So, if the commission has any questions, I can try and answer those.
Any questions for staff? Okay, I've got one. Okay, I've got one question. Ms. Ferguson, in regards to your comments about reducing the parking requirements, does the petitioner want to do this, or have we set any level of parking spaces that he wants, or anything of this nature yet?
Mr. Chair, Daybreak recognizes that they don't need all the parking spaces that they're required under code because of the nature of their use. Most of their patients arrive via anchor rides, and they leave via anchor rides. So there isn't a need to have that many parking spaces. So it's of their own volition that they want to reduce the number of parking spaces.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Pease?
Yes, through the chair. Does staff then, I didn't see a condition that supports the reduction of parking spaces to reflect the fact that most clients arrive by bus, not vehicle. So is that appropriate condition, and do you have wording for that?
Yeah, I don't have wording for it. I can come up with some wording, or if you want to take a stab at it, that would be fine also.
I'll invite you two, since you know the discussions that have been held.
Well, at this point, I wanted to say that, you know, I don't think that they have approached the traffic department yet to even make inquiries. Mr. Falkenberry can speak to that, whether they have done that or not. But there's no guarantee that the traffic department will allow them to reduce the number of required parking spaces. I think they have a very good chance, just owing to the nature of their operation there. But again, it hasn't, the traffic department hasn't weighed in on it yet. So whether, you know, it's probably premature to make it a condition. You might, you know, we might word it in the sense that, you know, try and resolve it, or consider reducing the number of parking spaces. But I don't think you can place that on them, because it's really going to be up to the traffic department to make that final call.
Thank you.
Any further questions for staff?
Okay, we'll go on into the public hearing portion of this. First of all, I'd like to read the rules, so everybody knows the rules again. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedure. Petitioners have 10 minutes, and part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representatives of groups have five minutes. Individuals have three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action that the Planning and Zoning Commission takes. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after the Planning and Zoning Commission's final decision. Any individual may request written findings from any commission decision within seven days. So the public hearing is now open, and let's have, hear from the petitioner. You've got 10 minutes. And state your name, and let us know how much we want to reserve for rebuttal.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Thomas Falkenberry with Falkenberry &amp; Associates. I'm representing Daybreak. I have Liz Hunt, Director of Daybreak, for any technical questions about the program, and George Haley, who's the general contractor. I'd like to reserve three minutes for rebuttal. Daybreak's an adult daycare center, provides daytime-only care, primarily to persons with Alzheimer's disease and related dementias. This facility has been providing its service and operating continuously in the same location for over 27 years. The program's been in operation for 29 years. Should be noted that the largest growing population in Alaska is seniors. The Alaska Commission on Aging in 2007 published the Economic Well-being of Alaska Seniors Report. This report stated while senior population in the U.S. increased by 12 percent in the decade of 1990s, it grew by 60 percent in Alaska. The report also noted that the baby boomers comprise 32 percent of Alaska's population, and that that number of individuals becoming seniors in Alaska in the next few years will increase faster than any other state except Nevada. And Daybreak Daycare Services was established in 1982 under Anchorage Community Mental Health Services. At the time, it was granted a non-conforming status, since it didn't fit into any of the old or the new Title 21 use designations. A large addition was made to the facility in 1990, and at that time, they were required to file for a conditional use. During that process, it was determined again that they didn't fit into any of the use designations, and so the non-conforming status was continued. Due to complications of the disease process and other physical disabilities, this population has specific building requirements. It requires specific program designed to benefit the client and maintain a therapeutic environment. Daybreak, with their current facility, is able to provide services to approximately 20, 25 persons daily. They're experiencing a need to expand to accommodate an ever-growing population and its need of its services. This proposed addition would allow them to provide services for up to 50 individuals on a daily basis. Daybreak facility began originally as a renovated family, single-home family. And this facility is particularly well-suited for the Alzheimer's, the ADRD-type program. It provides a comfortable home-like environment, reminds the participants of their own homes. It's furnished similar to a typical residence. The site works really well, because it's got a large lot. The lot is 1.8 acres, about 78,495 square feet. With the addition, will probably take up approximately 10 percent, maybe between 10 and 11 percent of the site with the building itself. The idea is to maintain the existing heavy mature landscaping for its aesthetic and therapeutic value. Clearing limits, it is our intent to set clearing limits, so that we do make sure we maintain as much of those existing trees as possible. Once the addition is made, there will still be approximately 79 feet of vegetation from the edge of the building to the west property line. And there will be about 70 feet from the south corner of the building to the south property lawn. The main facility is also approximately 110 feet and 152 feet from the north and west, east property lines respectively. The addition will add about 3,111 square feet. The majority of this will be a large dining facility. We are also including three large toilet rooms that accommodate the people that have more difficulties going to the toilet. It also allows for a commercial kitchen, which gives the program a lot better control in the types of meals that they're serving. It also serves as part of the Alzheimer's treatment to allow them familiar activities such as cooking. It helps them recognize how to do things if they're in the process of helping develop the food, and then they set the plate before them, and then it makes it a lot easier for them to eat. So the proposed project is consistent with Daybreak's goal of enhancing the quality of life for both the participants and their caregivers by providing a safe and accessible facility for the provisions of service. The kitchen expansion will support independence and choice, as participants can have a role in deciding what foods they will have for lunch and snacks. This activity is not now possible. This proposed, much-needed expansion will allow a well-established, nationally-recognized program meet the needs of an ever-growing population in Anchorage.
Okay, you've got, it looks like about four minutes and 22 seconds for rebuttal. Ms. Pease?
Yes, through the chair. I'm still trying to get a handle on whether the activity level at the site will increase. And I think I did hear you say, currently, you're serving 25. You will be able, with this facility in addition, to serve your maximum allowed of 50 persons. Is that correct?
Through the chair, Ms. Pease. Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thanks. And then to Ms. Ferguson. And you said that the conditional use permit, original conditional use permit, sets a limit of 50. So the community council wants a limit of 50, but this commission doesn't need to take any action to maintain that limit. Is that correct?
Through the chair. Ms. Pease, yes, that's correct.
Okay. And then one more thing. In terms of the impact of this fairly large building compared to other houses, could you verify my observation on page 10, looking at the lot size for this lot compared to other lots in Zodiac Manor and the adjoining, I think it's Birch Run or something like that? This is a larger lot. Is this not a larger lot compared to other lots on both sides of Abbott?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to make that observation. Thanks.
Any further questions for the petitioner? Okay, Mr. Wilson?
Yes, thanks for your presentation. I just wondered if you've grown over the years, if the demand is growing as the studies indicate, do you have plans for increasing the number of clients or individuals served in the future? And if so, would it be on this site?
I believe Liz Hunt could probably speak more to that.
At this time, our plans are--
Please state your name for the record.
I'm sorry, Liz Hunt. At this time, we're going to continue with the conditional usage that we agreed to back in 1984, and we've stuck with for the last 27 years. So that's our plan at this time, is to just continue to only serve that maximum number of 50 individuals.
Ms. Pease?
Thank you. Just a couple of quick questions. One for information. Is Jupiter Drive paved?
I'm sorry?
Is Jupiter Drive paved?
Yes, I believe it is.
Okay. And then, do you foresee, or has there been any talk of a second access with the additional size of this building, additional access to the lot?
No, we have not discovered, or we have not discussed that. But what we did in the parking layout is since the anchor ride vehicles come in, what they do is, we have more space between the back of each parking, so that there's room to turn around in there. And difficulty, I'm not sure what sort of process we'd have to go through to get access out onto Abbott. But right now, I think we've accommodated for any vehicles coming in and utilizing the site.
And fire, has, fires okay with it?
So far, they have been, yes, sir. We had a pre-submission meeting with the municipality to kind of look at this project, and then we had the pre-application meeting as well.
Okay.
Mr. Frederick?
Thanks, through the chair, Mr. Falkenberry. It appears from the plans in your submittal that, it looks like there might be eight parking places right now?
Currently, there are--
Kind of all off the corner of the existing structure?
Right now, there's--
Oh, well, there's a garage, there are two--
There's a garage that has three cars on it, and then right up next to the building, there's approximately--
Looks like one--
Seven or eight, yeah.
One or eight there. And if my calculations are right, by the parking requirements for that zoning, you're going to need to have 36, and it looks like you provided for 36.
Yes.
Now, currently, those eight spaces plus the garage handle your needs adequately?
Yes, they do. Yes, sir.
Seems like overkill to have 36 places, doesn't it?
When we initially had the pre-application meeting, we had the site plan laid out, and we essentially showed maybe a few more than what was original. And after the pre-application meeting, staff did some research, and they came up with the numbers that we needed to provide for this facility. So we increased the parking after that pre-application meeting.
To what?
We took it up to the 36.
Oh, oh, oh. So you think at this point, right now, they're going to require the 36?
Excuse me?
Right now, they're going to require the 36?
That's what we were told would be required, yes.
Would you object to us putting a condition that you attempt to reduce the number of parking spaces?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay, are there any other questions for the petitioner? Okay, Mr. Pruce?
Yeah, would you plan on, with the new construction, to have vehicle access around the entire building?
No, right now, the access is still mainly the north side of the property.
So for emergency egress, folks would be spilling all out into the parking lot?
They would be, they have ways to go to the east, the west, and the north, well, and the south. So as far as driving around the building, we did not indicate anything for going around the building.
I'm just curious if the fire truck showed up, where the folks inside would go to stay out of the way of the trucks with the, you know, if there's enough room. That's why I was wondering if they could get around the backside, or if they would have a place to go to--
We have, we've indicated an extensive deck along the west side and the whole south side, so they would be able to move into those locations.
Any further questions for the petitioner?
Okay, sir, you've got about four minutes and something for rebuttal. And so, we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing now. Oh, it's already been opened with the petitioner's presentation. So would anybody like to testify? Would anybody like to testify? I guess we don't have anybody that wishes to testify this evening, so Mr. Falkenberry, you're back on deck. Is there any further questions? Ms. Ferguson?
Yes, in my earlier presentation, I failed to mention a question that Commissioner Pease had, and that had to do with snow storage. Was the space shown adequate? If you'll turn in your packets to page 56. If you look at it, they're showing snow storage area on the north of that new parking area. And also, to the west, there's that little three-space area, there's snow storage there and along on the north side. But if you also turn to page 64, and look at those same areas, they are proposing a drainage swale in those areas. So there may be some, something they still need to work out regarding snow storage. You can't put store snow in a drainage swale, because then the drainage swale becomes, it can't operate as it's intended to function. It's a very tight space in the sense that it's, a lot of it is fenced, and where you normally could store some snow, you're unable to do it because it's fenced, or they have a retaining wall, or... So it's a difficult area to find a, to store snow. The only options I could think of is if they had additional pavement, they could store it on the pavement and let it melt off and go into the swales. Other than that, they may have to have it trucked offsite if they can't find a place
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ferguson.
Okay. Any further questions for Mr. Falkenberry? Okay, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm closing the public hearing, and the matter rests with the commission. Need a positive motion. It looks like it was moved by Mr. Parks and seconded by Ms. Dean. Dean. Mr. Parks, would you please state your motion, and you may speak to it.
Thank you, Chair. We, I'd like to make a positive motion in case number 2011-061. This is a recommendation to allow the expansion of adult care facility in an R6 residential district, subject to the following conditions that are listed on pages six and seven of our package, and would also like to add to that, that we would like to see the parking reduced by 20% as a requirement.
Okay, so you want to add an additional condition? Basically says pursue with Traffic Department authorization to reduce parking requirements by 20%?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
I realize that's not a hard and fast thing, because they could say, no, we want to have all 36 spaces.
Right.
But it's kind of dependent on how sweet you talk to them and everything, so. Okay, are there any other comments, oh, from the Commission? Okay, so the motions on the floor to approve. Are there any other comments, any other additions, any other amendments that the Commission would like to add? Is there any objection? Okay, I'll do the findings. I'll do the findings. Okay, it, the general standards for conditional use under 215020 have been met. It conforms to the standards and regulations, and specifically, it doesn't change the original non-conforming approval from the Assembly. It is compatible with the existing planned land use, and it will not have a permanent negative impact on pedestrian and vehicular traffic, or the demand for and availability of public services and facilities. It won't have a permanent or negative impact on noise, air, water, or other forms of environmental pollution, and it does maintain compatible and efficient development patterns and land use intensities. So is there any objection? No objection, that passes unanimously. Now, before we escape this evening, we've got a planned visit to the-
Mountain Air Drive.
Yeah, so if you could sort of bring us up to date on that?
Yeah, I just wanted to get a final head count for the trip on up to Mountain Air Drive extension on Thursday afternoon. Who is still planning to come? If you would raise your hand. Two, three.
Two, three, four of us?
It looks like five, by my count.
And Nancy may go to that.
Yeah, I think Nancy had raised her hand before.
Okay, where are we supposed to meet?
We're meeting over at the Permit Center on Tudor Road in Elmore.
Okay, out in front?
Out in front. Yeah, we're going to go, and there'll be a large van there that'll seat 12 people, so look for the minivan, or just meet out in front of the main entrance.
Okay, bring your walking shoes and your boots.
Definitely bring your walking boots, rubber boots, knee-high.
Two, we'll leave at 2:00, so you probably ought to be there, you know, five minutes of, or something like that, if you like, with the skate right in. Okay, any other, we've got a thing we're passing out here, renewal of the subscription to Planning Commissioner's Journal, and, let's see, I got to pay 67 bucks, and then everybody else gets to pay 12 bucks. What a deal. I'll go ahead and, I'll take care of this. If you want to give me your money, and then I'll just subscribe and give you all your copies. I think the way they do, they send it to one person, and then we hand them out. Yeah, yeah, so, anyway, next meeting, think about it, and let me know if you're interested in this Planning Commissioner's Journal. Anybody else have anything that needs to be brought up?
Mr. Chair, I had a couple of-
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Second thing was, we wanted to ask the Commission if they still wanted us to bring water, because oftentimes, we haul the water over here, and then we haul it back. And I wanted to add that the Urban Design Commission has not had any water for the last two years. I asked them this question, yeah, and I asked them this question, and they said, no, you know, we can bring our own water, or, you know, if you could provide cups, we can go out and fill it up with a water fountain if we want water. And so that's what we've been doing for the last two years. So I just wanted to ask you, if you still wanted us to bring water to the meetings, you do. Is that the- Okay, all right. And then the third thing I wanted to mention is that today, Angela Chambers called a staff meeting, and she informed us that she is going to be switching jobs. She's no longer going to be the supervisor for current planning. She is going to move over and be the supervisor for land use review and addressing. It's the former, it's the job that Brian Dean had formerly, some of you may have met him on occasion, but, so she is going to be officially take those duties on in two to three weeks, but also at the same time, doing the same job she has now, until such time they hire a replacement for her, and then she'll have to hang on a little while longer to train the new person for that job. So, yeah, she may not, you may not be seeing her anymore at Commission meetings, and that's the reason why. And she's doing this for personal reasons.
Okay, Madam Secretary has something for us.
I just wanted to point out that in the past, there'd been a couple of questions about whether or not there'd be a, we had a box with studies to refer to during the meeting and stuff. That box is now over there, and contains 20-some different studies, like the whole site district plan, the central business, Eagle River Central Business District. Anyway, there's a whole list here, and it's there for us to reference, and then put them back, and we'll store them in the security office here. Thank you.
Very good. Any other comments from the Commissioners?
Yes, Chair, the airport, or the West Anchorage Plan, District Plan, where are we on that one?
They're getting cranked up on it. They actually talked about it at the last meeting that we had with the Director, and they're gathering information on it right now. They're getting public comments, and it's going to come out- Yeah, public hearing, I, yeah, July, August, somewhere in there. Yeah, and they asked us if we wanted to get, yeah, get involved.
We called to contact the two committee members, you and I think Jerry-
Yeah.
Dana. To give you a briefing on the plan before the public hearing.
Yes, so you can keep us informed.
Yeah.
I didn't want to get behind the eight ball.
Yeah, and what I do, I get ahold of Jerry, and, you know, start bugging him to say, hey, you know, we're the committee, we want to start sitting in on stuff, let us know.
You've already asked him to do that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I don't have to repeat what you-
No, I mean, but you need to, you need to take the initiative to show up, or to do what has to be done. In regards to that kind of stuff, I've been intending the AMATS thing, and we're going to be dealing with amendment to the AMATS thing probably in the fall, so I will keep you informed on that. Right now, the big thing is that they're collapsing two plans into one. Basically, the Eagle River Chugiak Plan is being melded into the Anchorage Bowl Transportation Plan, so that's an interesting little extra. Pardon me? Haven't heard anything on that.
Mr. Chair, one other thing, I, when you mentioned Eagle River, Al Barrett from our staff is going to be helping out long-range planning, and so he is not going to be doing any cases for the next several months. He's going to be working on the update for Chapter 10 for Eagle River Chugiak. They need some additional help, because they've got some deadlines to meet, and so they needed one of us to go over and help them out, so Al is taking on that role, and he probably won't be doing any cases until October.
Okay, what'd you do, did you guys match out, and he lost?
Yeah, it's just, yeah, so it means the staff that's left is going to have more cases to do, so.
Okay, anything else? Okay, well, we got through it tonight, after last week. I tell you, it took me a whole week to recover from that midnight drill on Monday. I was shot for last week.
I want to know what Harry drank at the break here, because he made two motions on this thing.
Make a motion, then we adjourn.
For a second.
Three emotions now.
Any objection? Must have Red Bull or something.